We have a quorum.
Good.
We have a full body. All right, so um. This will convene the February eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. On the agenda is continuation of the one thirty-three Essex Street Special Permit Hearing. And then Board Business. On tonight on to the agenda tonight, we're going to be talking about traffic and stormwater management. Um, before we get to that, um, I wanted to just go, I sent an email around, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Um, there was a lot of information presented at our last meeting. So I wanted to ask the board if they had any specific uh, questions related to hydrology, geohydrology, or the blasting um, plans and information that were presented at the last meeting. Um, so that um, we can record those in writing and submit those to um, the and and various other parties. And then have that information presented at a future meeting. So the goal here is just to record questions that might um, individual members may have not to debate them because that's not on the agenda tonight. But to just put those on the record and have people um, answer those. So.
I have to.
Before we do that.
I have to say as a scientist, I'm a little bit um.
Bill, can you hold on one second?
Okay.
Want to take roll call? Um, so um, I'll start with you, Bill.
Bill Wheaton here.
Okay, Corey.
Corey Booney present.
Okay. Pat, as in Pat Norton.
Pat Norton here.
Okay, Marnie.
Marnie Crouch here.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Poor here.
Amal.
Amal Dogg was here.
Richard.
Richard Boroff here.
And Rick Mitchell here. Okay. So I'm sorry, Bill, to interrupt you, you want to go ahead?
Well, just in terms of the evidence and arguments that we have heard about stormwater. It seems that the engineers really can't find any problem with the development. And the people in various groups are surrounding the Tobacco Lake area keep raising the specter of horrible things happening. And I just wish I had a little firmer understanding from the engineers where they would say, no, that cannot happen. As opposed to, we see no problems with this. And then we get more letters from a butters saying that, you know, the climate change is going to increase rainfall and the whole, you know, it it it's it's. It it doesn't seem to be any science that says there's a problem. But so you look at the map and you think, oh, yeah, there's all sorts of water running underground and so on. And I sort of sense one part of this is mostly fear, not science, and the other is mostly science, not fear. But I I just would love a little more clarity on it. Maybe a chance to 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 ask the engineers. Is there any chance that what these people are writing about in their letters could actually happen?
Okay.
At this point, I I have a suggestion because I do have um, a number of questions that I would direct at um various parties. My questions are not uh, directed at one particular individual or firm. But since uh, you indicated that those questions would be transmitted in writing, I would like the opportunity to um, submit my questions to Patrick in writing. And uh, then if any other board members have questions, um, they could um, craft their questions and also submit them to Patrick and then he could compile them and distribute them um, to all the interested parties so that uh, we could get a a good discussion um, at a subsequent meeting.
Uh, but when you say the interested parties, I think that before they're distributed to anybody outside the board. I think all board members should be allowed to look at the questions. Uh, because they may have uh, comments relative to the questions. Uh, Patrick, uh, would that be any kind of a problem to do?
I don't think so.
Okay, I would like to see the questions before they're submitted to outside parties. I think we need to see them first. And then submit them. We may have comments that 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 are well, maybe enlightening or different opinion or something like that.
Yeah, we want to keep these, we're 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 trying to keep these as technical and specific to the blasting hydrology and geohydrology presentation. So.
I get that.
So if any board members have questions they would like to pose to the applicant or any other parties um, now that would be fine as well because these will be recorded. And uh, as Marnie suggested, if members have specific questions they'd like to put in writing and submit to Patrick, that's fine as well. I wanted to uh, let everybody know that was an option. And we have two um, options for submitting those.
I have just one point for clarification on the heels of what Bill said. Um, and that is that uh, one of the engineers uh mentioned that there's all these mechanisms in place to observe uh, the effects of the blasting um throughout the process. And those are there to then alert um, you know, the group that uh some sort of resolve needs to be made. Um, and I just wondered if there were examples of of sort of how they might um, mitigate something going wrong on the site. You know, they they mentioned that the blasting, one party said the blasting could, you know, do one thing to the water, another part party said blasting won't do something to the water, uh, but should it start to show signs that something is going to end up in the water, uh, then it gives them enough time to react. And I just wondered what those reactions would be or given that they can't be overly specific. Yeah.
Or mid 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 mitigation. Have there been any examples of this? And what was done to mitigate it? And I would like to have them address all the questions raised. An engineer look, a good engineer, look at all of the issues raised in the Tobacco Lake Water said watershed association letter. Which sounds very draconian in the sense of what could go wrong. And I want to.
Did we all get that letter? Because I don't remember seeing any letter from them.
You just forwarded it yesterday or today?
Okay, I haven't been on email that much and I've been having.
I didn't get it. I didn't get it until very recently too, but but.
Yeah.
I would like to address and know if there's any validity to them or whether it's just, you know, nothing but fear.
Okay. Well, if it's a question of fear versus validity, I think we need to get an outside technical authority to this to differentiate that. I don't, that's not, we're not qualified to do that.
I agree. I agree.
That's why we have a third part. That's why we have a third-party reviewer. I'd like to, um, I I don't want to get into a big discussion here. If people have specific questions, as Bill did, as Corey did, that's great. If not, I'd like to move on.
Yes.
I've got uh, I've got two questions, but I'll forward it uh, as Marty suggested, I'll forward it to Patrick for distribution.
Okay, good. Anybody else?
Nope.
I was gonna do the same, Rick. Just one, one question related to test pit locations and some of the sample uh, information that was taken, but that that I'll just put it in the email, be easier.
Okay, very good.
Easy to formulate.
All right, I think we that we've covered that. Um, so now we'll move on to um, transportation and uh, stormwater management. And Jill, I think uh, you can take over now and tell us what's coming.
Sure. Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of the petitioner Tobacco Hill Capital Partners. Um, regarding the special permit and stormwater management permits for one thirty-three Essex. Um, here with me this evening, and if if I may ask Mr. Ruffett for you to promote um, Scott Thornton and Granite Engineering as they will be the parties to present. In addition to that, um, here on behalf of the petitioner, um, the individuals who may in fact need to participate in a discussion as well would include um, Greg Hockmouth, Larry Smith.
What happened? Uh, something went dead.
Excuse me?
Jill, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, I'm sorry. It it just went dead and I I say I'm not online.
Yeah, you're probably getting an interruption service.
Okay.
So I think everyone mentioned has been promoted to panelist.
There we go. Everybody is now online. Um, so so just as an introduction, um, to be able to begin the presentation, we welcome the receipt of those individual comments and are prepared um, to respond. I think it makes sense. You've gotten a tremendous amount of information. And today I noticed Ms. Crouch and I did the same exact thing. We prepared a list of all the information that you've received. I clearly presented only that information that was verified, reviewed by a peer reviewer and then submitted in order to provide only um, supported information, supported by science, if you will, Mr. Wheaton. Um, so I I did provide that list and submitted it. In addition, I did provide you with the um, visuals. You had asked us for the artist's rendering. Um, and I can present those at any time, but I believe the board did receive those. What we had done was redo the pictorial based on um, the two hundred and fifty-foot setback. And if I may, just share my screen so I can show those um.
Jill, um.
Yep.
I will, um, I want to focus on stormwater and.
Do you want to not show those? I figured Mr. Wheaton had asked for them, so I had them and I, last time I didn't show something in a timely fashion, so I felt kind of guilty.
Yeah, but I I I don't want to go there on now. Um, you did submit those and they've all been distributed to the planning.
No, no worries. I I not done. So um, basically, we did submit something. We submitted a follow-up statement from Mr. Frappa because we really did not. We weren't given the opportunity to respond to a couple of the things that were presented at the hearing. Um, you know, we didn't get them ahead of time, so we weren't able to identify those issues and address them. So we did submit that letter from Mr. Frappa.
Right, and that and and that's why we're going to take questions.
Yeah.
The board got your information. And the board's got its own questions that we'd like to submit to you as well as other parties. And and then we'll, we will reconvene so that you'll have an opportunity as will other people to address those specific questions.
Which would be perfect. And then could we, as far as when those meetings are, I do know when my my representatives are going to be able to be present because it's it's getting to be in February. It's always vacation week for kids. So there's a big block of time that I can't get anybody to attend. So we can discuss that at the end of the hearing if that suits you, Mr. Mitchell.
That's fine. You can coordinate that with uh, Patrick.
Okay, perfect. So again, we understand that there was a huge amount of information and um, we are going to present this evening the traffic that's going to give you a good impression of what the real impacts are. Because you've been getting so much information that really isn't accurate. I mean, we're going to show you really what the impact of a senior housing is, and that's going to be presented by Mr. Thornton from Vaness Engineering. In addition to that, we have a a very robust presentation that we made by Granite Engineering relative to the stormwater management plan. And as you said, Mr. Wheaton, what's the differentiated fear and what science? You've been given a tremendous amount of undifferentiated fear, you know, impacts to watershed statements that it will all absolutely unsupportable. And you're going to hear from Granite how we do protect the environment, how we ensure that there's no detriment, how we control, how we have NIPDs, which is basically that national pollution um, permit from under the Clean Waters Act, and how we have a stormwater management pollution plan that's put in place during construction so that we make sure there's no runoff, there's no impacts to to wetlands, to a butters, and that there isn't any erosion or further erosion of of any of the slopes. And and that's what you're going to hear tonight from um, from Granite. Um, so I guess at this point, based on, you know, the information that Mr. Mitchell had said, you don't really want to hear all about the summaries, and I get it. I'm going to turn it over to um, there they are, Granite Engineering and Brent Cole and Jeff Merritt to present to this board. Thank you very much.
So this is just clarification for everybody. This is the stormwater. Yes, good, thank you.
Good evening, board. And can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So my name is Brent Cole. Uh, beside me is my colleague Jeff Merritt, and we're from Granite Engineering. Uh, we are the civil site design engineers for the project, and we prepared the stormwater analysis. And we designed the stormwater practices on the site. The stormwater analysis for this project uh, was designed to the MAST EP stormwater policy. It was also reviewed by your peer reviewer, TEC, and Peter Ellison, who was also with us tonight to help with the question and answer. So I'm going to start briefly discussing the watershed, uh, the steps that we take in our analysis to prevent issues downstream of the project. I will touch on the different systems that we use, um, and how they function. I'll also describe the construction erosion control practices that Mrs. Mann alluded to, um, that we're proposing. And lastly, I will discuss the long-term maintenance agreement uh, required to be upheld by the owner post-construction. So the the first component to any storm analysis is analyzing the pre-development condition. Um, so as the property exists today. And what you see in front of um, on the screen is the pre-development analysis plan. I believe you're all probably getting familiar with the site, but Tobacco Road to the east, Essex Street is to the north. And the property is in the middle of the screen. What is surrounded by the property is a dark dashed line that represents the watershed. The top of the property is pretty much directly in the center, um, near that three F. And watersheds off the property in a three sixty direction, all towards that dark dashed line. As you can see, majority of the site is in one watershed, that is three F. And that gets discharged to the wetland that surrounds this watershed area and discharges to a culvert under Tobacco Road. Now, we have to analyze the pre-development before we analyze the post-development because the main goal of the stormwater analysis is to prevent any impacts downstream from the project. So we we move into a post-development analysis, and it's a very similar uh, plan. As you can see, Tobacco to the east, Essex to the north, a same uh, dark dashed line that surrounds the area that is the overall watershed. But what is different is a more of a micro delineated. Um, and it it may present to you as somewhat of a messy plan, but there's a rhyme or reason for this. And each individual dark dashed line represents a catch basin or a stormwater practice that is being analyzed in our system. And and the the reason why we analyze these systems is to see how much stormwater is going to the stormwater ponds that we are uh, looking to design and and develop. And those stormwater practices are are selected throughout the site depending on the soil condition, the functionality that we needed to uh, play a role in the stormwater policy and in the stormwater management. And um, and basically comes together to provide this post-development plan that we can then use to make sure that we have no downstream impacts. So for this particular project, we chose a series of stormwater practices, all have different functionality. Um, some, most, all of them treat stormwater, um, some infiltrate stormwater, and they all help in the mitigation of reducing peak flows off-site. So the the five or six treatment practices that were chosen were five rain gardens and one infiltration pond. The other practices that were chosen are more pre-treatment practices and other practices that help with mitigation that I will get into uh, in a bit. I'm actually going to switch screens to a, the rendering that we submitted a few weeks back. Um, it's a color rendering, but it also shows where these stormwater practices are. Um, so I'll run through basically each individual storm practice and where it's located on site. When you first enter the property off of Tobacco Road, to the right, there is a rain garden that's situated um, off of the parking spaces. This rain garden collects the majority of the beginning of the roadway, all the way up to the intersection where there's a crest in the hill. As you navigate through the property, to your right, there is a rain garden uh, number two that collects majority of this area, if you follow my mouse, as well as the connection road that loops back in on itself. Continuing down the roadway, there's another rain garden situated to the right, right off of the roadway. Uh, this rain garden collects the majority of the loop road, um, and and actually most of the roadway itself. Um, with the exception of the roadway B and the cul-de-sac. In the middle of the loop road, again, there's a, there's another rain garden. There is a reason for all the rain gardens. But the fifth rain garden here collects all of the roof water from this loop road. As we move down roadway B, there is a rain garden that collects all of the stormwater from roadway B as well as the cul-de-sac. And upstream of that rain garden, there's a detention pond that collects the watershed area from this undeveloped area to help mitigate the flows before discharging to rain garden three. Last but not least, and somewhat remote, is the infiltration pond, as you can see in yellow. This infiltration pond helps recharge the stormwater as well as treat it. Um, there is a maintenance path that leads down to this infiltration pond. And the reason it is situated so remotely is because this is an area that we've found really good sandy soils to allow for peak infiltration of the stormwater. I'm going to flip back to my presentation. And I I believe some of you probably want to know, you know, about the rain gardens, about the infiltration ponds. So I I put together a few slides to kind of give you some information on what they do, how they function, and what we're treating for. So the reason we chose rain gardens for the primary stormwater treatment practices is because it is a low-impact development practice. Uh, you do plant them, so they look, they look a lot better on site. Um, they kind of blend in with the topography. You can plant them with similar plantings that you have around the site. Um, they they usually are planted with plants that are better suited for stormwater and being inundated with water, but they also look really nice. So the treatment of the stormwater comes from the twenty-four-inch layer that is below the surface. And you can see this picture here. The darker area is that bio-retention filter media. Um, it is typically two feet thick. It is consisting of a sand and mulch product that helps filter out the material. Treatment is also done by a microbe activity, and the plants help uptake any any contaminants and things of that nature. The rain gardens are extremely effective against TFS or total suspended solids, removing ninety percent of them. They also remove thirty to ninety percent of phosphorus and forty to ninety percent of all metals. Stifting to the last treatment practice that we have, the infiltration pond. The infiltration pond is a critical component because it it recharges the the aquifer. It it allows for stormwater infiltration. The infiltration pond is very similar to the rain garden, yet it doesn't have that filter media and it doesn't have plantings. Instead, it is designed to use the native material that's out there and filters through that native material. The system is designed to be well above the water table to make sure that the water is actually treated prior to being introduced into the water table. They are effective against total suspended so- soil solids, uh, eighty percent. They are effective sixty to seventy percent against phosphorus, eighty-five to ninety percent against metals, fifty to sixty percent against nitrogen, and ninety percent against pathogens. To meet the MAST EP policy, we are required to infiltrate a certain amount of stormwater. So the policy comes up with a certain amount that you are removing because you are adding impervious surfaces to the property. And in order to meet the policy, you have to replicate that existing infiltration that is occurring on site today. We are required to infiltrate four thousand four hundred and eighty-three cubic feet. Our stormwater practices infiltrate fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty-nine cubic feet, which is more than three times the required infiltration of the MAST EP policy. So I touched a little bit about them, but we wouldn't have these high peak performance stormwater practices without the pre-treatment devices that are spread out throughout the site. And these pre-treatment devices are are critical because they remove the sediment and the erosion buildup as well as any contaminants on site. The majority of the stormwater from our development is collected in the roadways. And in the roadways, there are deep sump catch basins with oil-water separators. These are offline catch basins, so they they're not interrupted by any flow coming into them besides what comes down through the rim of the catch basin. The stormwater is conveyed to a pipe that then is conveyed to a sediment forbey that is in the stormwater pond. This sediment forbey is also critical and another pre-treatment device to help settle out the water before it's discharged to the filter media or the infiltration pond. Once the water is filtered through the media, it is then controlled by a outlet structure. This outlet structure is another critical component to the overall system. It's a, it's designed with a series of wiers, it's a series of orifices to help slow down the peak flow rate over twenty-four hours and help it to mimic the pre-development rate. So that there's no, there's not much difference between the pre-development flows and the post-development flows. Once the water exits the outlet structure, it then goes into a level spreader. And that level spreader is a it's a long device that is built into the the land that helps water that is more concentrated be discharged back to a sheet flow-like flow. And this sheet flow helps reduce velocities. It also helps reduce erosion. And it provi- and it mimics more of what the pre-development flow is like. In doing all of this, and in all this design, we keep in mind this low-impact development requirement and desire that is put forth in most designs today. And and where, how we target these low development, you know, uh, practices is we we try to incorporate rain gardens as much as possible. And these natural rain gardens, infiltration ponds, there's other solutions. But we find rain gardens work the best against the removal of contaminants. When possible, we've disconnected all roof runoff so that it doesn't get involved with the roadway runoff. Therefore, we're able to discharge the roof runoff directly to the pond without going through pre-treatment devices. We also reduce the roadway widths out here, which helps reduce the amount of pavement. We decrease them from twenty-four feet down to twenty-two feet. And in also reducing the amount of pavement through the cul-de-sac to twenty feet, as well as providing a nice landscape cul-de-sac uh, island. Because this is a cluster development, we've minimized native clearing um, of that, you know, we've compared to what a conventional plan would be. Similar to the roadway length, you'll find that the cluster developments roadway lengths are a lot less than what a conventional would be. And because we don't impact any of the wetland buffers, this is an environmentally sensitive development. So I'm going to switch out here to the erosion component. Um, and we can talk about the stormwater questions after I get through the erosion kind of component of all this, because before we start constructing these ponds, before we start constructing anything, we have to have this erosion control plan in place. And the the first step in preventing erosion is developing this plan with the EPA. Um, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires it as well. And it's it's what Jill mentioned, it's called a SWIP. It's a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And it's a permit that you get with the EPA at the time of construction. The SWIP is put in place to document and to help minimize the stormwater pollution and erosion control during construction. It helps the contractor understand what measures he can use, what measures he has to use, uh, who to contact in case of emergencies, how to prevent any issues, and how to document any issues that do come up on site. The SWIP requires inspections after quarter-inch rainstorm events, so very, very small rainstorms. And if there are no rain, it requires weekly inspections. And the inspections are conducted by a qualified individual. Um, they will actually be have to be qualified by EPA nowadays when this SWIP actually goes in place. Uh, they will have to walk the property, check all of the erosion control measures, make sure they are in compliance, there's no issues with them, they will document them. And then if there are any issues, they will make recommendations on how to fix those issues within a timely manner. The practices that are in. The practices that are included in the SWIP are mainly included in our plans as well, and I'll run through those quickly. The first off, one off the road is a stabilized construction exit. So this is a group of rocks and gravel that help dossel the trucks to make sure there's no sediment trackout onto tobacco road. This will help prevent the spread of erosion on tobacco. We will also be constructing perimeter controls around the site. As you can see here, there's a 12-inch diameter mulch sock. You'll see this to be consistent on all the plans that are surrounding any disturbance leading into the undisturbed areas of the tree line. There are storm drain inlets that are included in the catch basins. A proprietary product would be a dandy bag. They go into the catch basin. They prevent any erosion from entering the catch basin and from entering the pipes that will eventually enter the stormwater systems. Stone check dams are used in swales and ditches to help reduce the velocity, which helps reduce the erosion. And last but lot, but not least are the erosion control blankets. These are applied to any three-to-one slope or greater. And they help tack down the soil while the hydroseed is placed and the seed begins to establish and stabilize that area. They are extremely effective on three-to-one slopes, two-to-one slopes, and in preventing any erosion while we wait for that seed to grow. What is not shown on this plan but is involved in the stormwater pollution plan are things like dust control, constant street sweeping, and a water truck to help prevent any dust from being trapped out of the site. The stabilization of stockpiles. Stockpiles will move as construction progresses. But making sure these are stable, these are seeded if they're long-term stockpiles and their perimeter controls are wrapped around those stockpiles to prevent any erosion. You may see settling basins, which are very similar to a detention basin, which help kind of control the stormwater during construction and discharge it slowly through means of removing that erosion. And within 14 days of disturbance, this property, it does have to be somewhat, it has to be stabilized. So it has to be seeded or there's different forms of providing stabilization like the erosion control blanket. But within 14 days of disturbing the earth, they do have to be stabilized. And last but not least is a spill prevention plan. So if there are any spills, obviously we don't anticipate there being, but if there are, there'll be documentation. There's measures put in place to fix those issues and notify anyone that's necessary. The last component that I wanted to touch on was the Long-Term Pollution Prevention Plan and the Operation and Maintenance Manual. So the SWIP document talks about the construction, but after construction, these stormwater ponds require maintenance. The homeowners association, or the owner until it's a homeowners association, will be in control of this document. And it will be by law for them to maintain this property. We do find that when a homeowner, homeowners association is involved, they do enact policies in their bylaws. And they typically hire this out to someone that is qualified to review these stormwater ponds and provide this maintenance. I'll, I'll run through a, a quick example, and I won't go through them all unless, unless you guys have questions. But a rain garden, for instance, is to be inspected after every rainfall event of two and a half inches or greater. The pre-treatment devices associated with that rain garden will be inspected twice annually. Pruning and mowing will be conducted annually. And a drawdown check of 72 hours is to be conducted manually to make sure the stormwater pond is draining appropriately and is empty for that next storm event. That, that essentially concludes the stormwater component and the erosion control component. Our, our project meets the MAST DEP policy. It has been reviewed by TEC. We have revised the stormwater reports with minimal changes when the units started to shift. And I believe, I spoke with Peter Ellison from TEC this morning. He has not yet reviewed that, but there were minimal changes. And I believe they were more favorable changes due to the shifting of the units and the reduction of pavement. Jill, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much.
So Jill, Jill?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we can stop there and the board has questions?
Yes, to ask.
I have a question.
So.
Deposed that there is a spill. I mean, there's no activity up, up there now. So it's perfectly conceivable that someone fixing their car in the garage or whatever else spills a couple gallons of oil or, you know, gasoline. I mean, there's going to be 50 vehicles up there. So what, what happens to those contaminants? They're, you know, they're not anticipated. What, what's going to keep them out of the water supply?
So Mr. Wheaton, just to make sure I understand, you're, you're asking about when the condominium is effective and their private citizens on site, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Not about, yes, not.
I can, I can.
Not spills during construction, right? So when, when the whole system is operating and the development is completed, it's possible to imagine some, you know, spillage of some contaminants.
So the beauty of, of a condominium is actually that the condominium association really monitors this. And you can imagine there will be 50 individual homeowners and a board of trustees. And the board of trustees typically are people who have a lot of time and really pay attention and walk the site. So to the extent there's ever a spill onsite, you have to immediately report it to the fire department. You have to, depending on the level of spill, you then have to clean it up and then dispose of it in a proper fashion. And because, again, it's a condominium association, it is highly monitored by the group of owners. Because as most of the board knows, what a condominium is, is basically all the unit owners own a percentage of the land. They own it jointly and together. So it's a condominium, an association of owners.
I, 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 I under, I understand all that, but.
So they can find.
Deposed that it cannot all be cleaned up and it runs off.
If it cannot.
What does the, does the stormwater system?
Okay.
Ameliorate capture it and help ameliorate it as opposed to if there were just some independent houses there.
It, it does, and Brent will address that because there are.
That was.
Go ahead, Brent, the, the oil separators.
So, Mr. Wheaton, the, the catch basins, and, and there, there are a lot of them, are all deep sump catch basins. And there's a, there's a hood placed on these catch basins. It's a, it's an oil-water separator hood that prevents any oil, you know, oil rises and sits on top of the water. So water is able to go through the hood, but the oil stays on top. And, and back to that maintenance agreement, the, these catch basins will have to be cleaned annually or even biannually. So that oil will be removed before building up too much in these catch basins. But, but the stormwater will be, the oil from the stormwater or that spill will be collected in, in all deep sump catch basins.
Okay. With those catch basins, those catch base, basins wouldn't exist with some small development. They, they tend to, you know, it's an expense. They tend to occur with larger developments like this?
You, yeah, exactly. You know, one benefit of, of having a closed drainage system is we are able to provide these deep sump oil-water separators where a swale system with open drainage doesn't necessarily have those, those means to collect that before it runs into the system.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question. I'm wondering if you can go back to your presentation at the beginning. Yeah.
You should mention.
Yeah. Now, if you could go through two or three slides where you're describing the removal of contaminants. There we go. Okay. I just had a question. The, the pollutant removal, total suspended solids, I understand. There's quite a range there in phosphorus and metals. How, how do, how do you enhance that removal? Or what's the determining factor on the percentage of metals and phosphorus?
So these removals were, were given to us by MAST DEP. It's based on a wide range of testing. And, and obviously there, there's different components. There's, you know, the thickness of the rain garden. There's probably the soils. There's probably the, the media blend that was provided. And then obviously how much it was loaded. What they came up with, with results was obviously a wide range. You are correct. Thirty to ninety is very wide. And how they got that, I don't know. This is pulled from MAST DEP. I don't really know the specifics of the exact studies that were placed.
So this, in other words, their standards that you're building to, according to DEP, will remove this, this range of phosphorus and metals?
Correct.
Okay. Go to the next slide.
Can I ask two questions, please, before we go on?
Go ahead.
Okay. My questions are related. How often do the inspections occur? I think this was of rain gardens. And who is the inspector? Please?
So for the rain garden, the, the ongoing maintenance is every two and a half inch storm.
Okay.
So when a, when a half inch storm occurs, it has to be documented and someone has to maintain it. The person that is reviewing these, inspecting these, should be a qualified individual. A lot of the times homeowners associations will subcontract with either an engineer or an entity that does the inspection as well as the pruning and the maintenance of the system all at once. A lot of the times, they don't feel like they have a qualified individual, but it is up to them.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So it could be the homeowners association, a member itself. Or it could be an outside inspector who is trained and qualified to do this and does the work that needs to be done at the same time.
You got it. We, we do a series of these for, for clients and for projects that we have designed. They've, they've chosen to hire the engineers to do the inspections. But that's not, it doesn't, it doesn't say that they have you.
Right. Okay.
Now, I have a, I have a question, follow-up question, and this probably goes to Jill. I know, I know it's going to come up from probably board members as well as the public is. These will operate as well as they are maintained? So what legal strictures, requirements, whatever you want to call them, can be put in place to ensure that the homeowners association does in fact engage a qualified outside firm to maintain the, according to the standard that Brandon Engineering specified?
So what we actually do is when we file the master deed, we attach to it the operations and maintenance plan that requires that the condominium association management company actually comply with all of those parameters and conducts all the tests. And to the extent they don't, then the board can call them in and, you know, issue some sort of an order requiring them to undertake the prevention measures in the inspections. It's pretty unusual that a large condominium doesn't observe those. But that is your right to do it because we will make it part of the condominium regulations and rules.
So the condominium association is the self-enforcing agent here?
Well, I mean, they require, you, you tell them what is required. And then in the plans, you can request that we deliver to you evidence of inspections each year. So annually, annually, we would deliver to you those inspections. And quite frankly, you know, there is, there is, there are wetlands on site. So the conservation commission is entitled to come onto the site to make sure there is no pollutant aspects. And so is this board, actually. So at any point in time, you're able to come on, you're, you're entitled to ask about the performance and the review records for any of the ponds and take, take action to the extent that the condominium association isn't doing that. Now, clearly, while the project is being constructed, it'll be, you know, it's not going to completely sell out right away. So during that period of time, you have a tremendous amount of control and can stop the issuance of any building permits and/or occupancy permits to the extent something is not going according to HOIL and the conditions you put into the decision.
Okay, thank you. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Sorry, I spoke over you, Bill. Go ahead. Say it again, please.
No, it's Rick and.
Sorry.
So this is the infiltration pond. And where is, where is this flow coming from? You have the rain gardens and, and so I'm just was, there was a lot of information coming and I was trying to figure out where.
Let me flip to this. So the, the infiltration pond. This pond takes all the stormwater flow from rain garden five.
I got it.
As you can see, rain garden five is kind of nestled in between here. So this rain garden discharges down the maintenance path to infiltration pond number one. So infiltration pond number one receives already-treated water. The, the water is treated by rain garden five. And after it's treated, it gets discharged to the infiltration pond for another round of treatment. And then it is infiltrated into the ground.
Okay.
What kind of treatment, what kind of treatment? I'm sorry, Rick. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Um, go ahead, Richard, because I've got another question.
What kind of treatment does the rain garden do?
So the, the rain garden treats for total suspended solids, phosphorus, and nitrogen, not nitrogen, metals. Phosphorus and metals.
Okay, so what happens if there's a large accumulation of those metals and things in the rain garden? What happens then?
It'll be treated through the, the treatment process.
Through the what process?
The, the rain garden's treatment process. The, the, it helps treat those, those contaminants as well as the plants with the biological uptake.
Okay. What I'm getting at is, where do these metals accumulate? How do they get removed from the rain garden or whatever? I re, I don't really understand that, the whole process.
So the, the filter media helps filter the, these, these metals out before infiltrating into the, either the native soils or being discharged through the outlet control structures.
Okay, so, so then, how do they get removed from there? Wait, no way? I'm, I'm sorry. I'm being ignorant because I really don't understand how this whole system works.
So the, they're, they're removed from the, the, the microbe activity, similar to, you know, I guess a septic system or, or something like that. They, they decompose over time as they come through the filter media and, and are basically removed.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
And then if you could move on to the next slide, I'm sorry to dominate, but, but. And keep going. It was the construction, keep going. It was, it was towards the end there where you were describing the construction and, and I didn't quite understand. Keep going, keep going. It was the graphic, it was the graphic. It was towards the end.
The erosion control plan?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. So when is this built? At what stage of the development and when is it operational?
What do you mean, Mr. Chair?
Well, you described this, and what it, you gave it a, you had a terminology. And it looks like a pond on the gra, on the graphic. It's to the north. That's it. What is that called?
This is our, this is rain garden number one.
Okay. So I, I'm, and maybe I'm confused here. You were describing the construction, the process, and I got the impression that this was built to deal with.
I think he's referring to the construction basin in the SWIP.
And where's that?
So there's, so when I was speaking upon settling basins, that is a, that is a mechanism that the contractor can use during, if he's finding that stormwater is building up in areas, that he has to implement those settling basins to help reduce that stormwater. So that isn't shown on the, that's, that's more of a construction activity that the contractor has in his set of guidelines to follow.
Okay, so that, that has nothing to do with it?
Right.
Okay. They seem to flow together. They seem to, so that's.
Rick, I think another question or comment. So there's filter mitts all around. Rick, I think another question, uh, or comment. So there's filter mits all around, uh, the, uh, undisturbed area. So that's the first thing that's done to confine any construction, uh, erosion that might take place.
So what Mr. Smith is talking about is now part of the SWIP again, which will be further detailed when we do the NFTs and we file the SWIP. You put a sock around all the non-disturbed areas so that you don't have runoff and contamination. That's what he's talking about. But as we go through and develop the SWIP, um, with regard to contractor, you'll see even more controls. Am I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what Mr. Smith is getting to. So if, if, you know, it might be helpful, and I think that's really part of your question, Mr. Mitchell. So can you do me a favor, um, Brent, can you just walk through how, you know, you, you, the big concern here is during construction, are we gonna have sediment that's going to flow offsite? Are we gonna have impacts? So people wanna understand that it's being controlled. So if you can just show it and show where you'd put up those barriers.
Yeah, sure. So the, the perimeter controls are, are certainly one of the first thing that goes in. Um, and these, if you follow my green line here, these are situated, um, throughout the site. Uh, typically along the, the tree line because that's usually the edge of disturbance. Uh, and they are, they are followed through here. Uh, the stormwater ponds are constructed first. Um, they are stabilized so that they can accept clean stormwater from the construction site. So the stormwater ponds, along with the bulk socks, are typically the first implemented before things really start, start moving. The construction exit, um, is certainly one of the first things, um, as, as soon as you have trucks coming in and out. It may not be directly here, um, but it'd be shifted up and down the site depending on where they're exiting, uh, with construct, uh, truck activity. Um, those are the, the first main things that, that get implemented before construction, uh, really starts to get going.
Okay.
I have a question about construction also, Rick, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, uh, I guess dealing with stormwater is only one element, that, that you're gonna have to deal with, but also the, the dewatering that's gonna have, you know, especially with the amount of excavation and everything else that's going on at site and the height of the water table that's there. Is there an estimate about how much, you know, what, what are you gonna have to deal with and, and how it's gonna be dealt with as far as dewatering is concerned as part of construction?
So an, an estimate on how much? No, we don't, we don't have an estimate on how much. But there are dewatering practices in the SWIP, uh, plan and how to deal with dewatering. Uh, typically, they go in, uh, filter bags to make sure there, there's no erosion before being discharged.
Just with the extent of excavation, it might be a good, uh, because it, it can be quite a surprise. It could upwards of, you know, a hundred, two hundred gallons per minute in, in some areas like this, um, which is it, which would cause, you know, you, you would have to go into some other means of, of dealing with that water. And, uh, I guess I'm just wondering if it's been a consideration.
I'm.
It is a consideration when we do, when we review the site, we do look at what the characteristics are. Um, and, and that's why in the SWIP you have the dewatering plan. I mean, uh, we're not, you know, you have to look at each of the individual areas, Mr. Owen, to identify where the groundwater is because to your point, if you have an issue and you're gonna be digging in the groundwater, you have to be able to provide for that. And, and we do, but we do it as we, we go along. I don't believe, you know, there are certain areas that are going to hit groundwater and we can probably identify them to you, but there's a substantial number where we're not going to. Um, and it, would you like them to show you that? Because the SWIP does have a dewatering plan.
Just to make sure it was a consideration, you know, it, the SWIP gives you options for how to deal with. They're very generic, right? I mean, but this is a very specific construction. This is a very specific construction activity. And the water table is, you know, if you look at the test pit, look, it's three to seven feet in most areas. I, I think if you look at where the test pits were, so it's not that, uh, it's not that deep. I'm just very sure we can consider how much digging is gonna be done, but it, it, it might take an additional look from the constructor to come up with a more uh, planned way of dealing with the water. So it's not an emergency to have to deal with after the fact.
No, we definitely will develop a more robust plan when we file the NFTs. Absolutely. Go ahead, Brent.
I, I do think, you know, the test pits that you, that you reference, I, I think you're witnessing, uh, a historic seasonal high water table. Um, you know, that, that is based on, um, historic data and it's, and it's somewhat seasonal. So the, the water table out here is, is, it fluctuates. Um, and it, as construction progresses, they're going to encounter different situations. And that's really what that SWIP plan, um, is in place is it, it's meant to give the contractor an idea of how to handle all situations. Um, but we can certainly add that further to, to make sure that it's, it's sound when the, the SWIP gets implemented.
In addition to the construction activity, I guess if there's any temporary roads that are to be constructed to enable, um, the work, it'd be good to know where they, where they might be and what their, what their plan is for the materials that are gonna be used, because that will impact obviously stormwater prevention and how it's set up, um, at different stages during the course of the job. That's it.
I've got a question. I have a question. Go ahead. You, you may, you have, go.
Yeah, the question I have. The, the question I have is related to the, uh, phased construction. So you, you're apparently gonna build fifty percent of this initially as phase one. And then the remaining half at some point in the future, is that correct? Is that the intention?
Yes, the intention is to do fifty percent of the development. Yes.
Okay, could, uh, could you elaborate, please, on, uh, then how you intend to can control, assuming that all the blasting is done first? And, uh, all the tree clearing and stuff. Uh, and you're not gonna build the second part, which is the roadway B and the last part of the loop, roadway A loop. Um, but that will all be demolished, that whole area. And the phase one will be completed, is that correct?
So we don't demolish the whole thing. We don't do blasting all in one phase. That's why we even do blasting in two. And it's ve- it's very detailed in the control plan, Mr. Dahlquist, but that's, would you like for Brent to just zoom out so I can, I can explain a little bit further?
Yeah, I'd like to understand what, uh, how you gonna, how you gonna manage runoff?
Well, this is, this is probably gonna have to be another discussion when we talk to Andy about this, because we don't have him present. But I can, I can give you a little bit, um, of, of, a, a review, having heard his presentation on a number of occasions. And then I can follow up. So basically, Brent, can you, I don't, can you please show them the limit of phase? You have a phasing plan in the, in the, um, package, don't you, Brent, to show the limit of phase one?
Yep, give me one second.
One sec. This is better, Mr. Dahlquist, because then it'll show you exactly where phase one starts and ends.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course.
Can I ask a question of Jill, uh, while Brent is setting that stuff up, please?
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Jill, uh, some of this stuff sounds fascinating. And would it be possible at some point during these different phases to, uh, set up a time when we as a board, if, if other members want to, come and look and get in, uh, a visual, a, a tour of what's going on? I mean, it, it, this just sounds fascinating to me.
So we, we, we can do that because, but because it's an active, it's an active construction site, everybody has to have certain, you know, protective equipment and we have to talk about it with main drilling and blast because they're the contractors with the workers comp and the commercial liability policies. So I'm sure we can do some sort of an inspection at some point. If the board would like, it's just that it has to be, um, very organized because we'll have, you know, controls over the entire site. It'll be, there'll be construction fencing, everything in place to make sure people don't have access. But I'm sure that later down the road, if the board would like, we could arrange for something, you know, on a day when there is, when there aren't construction vehicles, but maybe just one of the, um, managers or supervisors who could show you.
Yeah, I would love that. Uh, I hadn't realized, uh, given thought to the safety problems and I, I understand that and I don't wanna cause an inconvenience. I just think it would be very fascinating to see this in progress.
No, I understand. And we definitely can contemplate that and, you know, try and set that up.
Okay, thank you.
So, so now, Mr. Dahlquist, this is the, um, phase plan. So everything, um, for lack of, north of that black line is phase one. So the way in which the blaster will actually, um, conduct the, the blasting, they'll start from the rear. So they'll create, um, and I apologize if this is remedial, they'll create a relief. So you come in and you, you ta- start taking the rock out in the back and you create a sheer face and you can peel it back, peel it back, peel it back. Because where is, what a relief face means is you want the rock not to go into the public way, right? Or into anybody. You want it to come toward you. You want it to come into the site. So we'll create that relief back in that area. And then we'll proceed forward with it. And we do not clear cut a site until we start the phase. So we will, um, I don't know if this is a term of art and I apologize, we'll overblast a bit. So even though the, you know, we're gonna only put units in the roadway and in a certain place, can you see? I can barely see, but can you see that temporary cul-de-sac?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go to that point so that we can create a temporary cul-de-sac so there's easy access through the site. So we'll create that and then we'll push forward. But before we're able to do any of that, as Mr. Collet said earlier, you know, from Granite Engineering, we create our stormwater systems, but we do it in two ways. We have construction stormwater basins, those release that are gonna be created depending on what the situation are, what the situation is. And then, just like Mr. Nolan said, we may end up having to have some dewatering techniques. It just depends on what we're doing at the exact time. And then we work our way forward and then we put in the road and then we begin our, um, our building of the individual units. But before that all happens, we have to have an active stormwater management system.
You're, you're, you're actually gonna have a finished grade then, is that correct?
Oh, we will, we will. We have to. So when we come in, we're gonna have to start to create a finished grade, but it takes, you know, the rock removal, Mr. Dahlquist, to do that. So we can't really have too much conflict. So when we're doing the rock removal, we have people on site to remove the stone and then also use it in the roads. But as we had discussed, and I don't know if we had talked about it in this board, but we had with the conservation commission, we create a staging area. And in that staging area, it has to be distant from the, um, wetlands. We have to cover it if we don't haul it offsite within seventy-two hours. Not because there's any by-productive blasting, there's none. It, we, we do not use, that, we use blastex. There's, there's no by-product that's going to be harmful to the environment. We don't use that product. We don't use the NFO. But rock can sometimes create turbidity. Sometimes there'll be some nitrates. So you wanna make sure you control it. And by the way, all of these things, turbidity and nitrates are all, um, able to be de- dealt with and, um, managed and eventually eliminated. So there's not as if this is creates a, a permanent problem. It does not. And that's why we have somewhere in the vicinity of eight monitoring wells around the site to ensure that there isn't any issue relative to, um, the, the runoff related to construction.
Yes, your inten- your intention that is to put in all the subsurface, uh, drainage system underground during phase one. So on the entire site, you'll have that done?
Not on the entire site, because we won't disturb the whole thing, but we're the, so you're now, Mr., yeah, Brent Collet said that the, the basin in the middle here, rain garden five, it goes off to the infiltration to the north. It doesn't come to the back. So Brent, you can explain that. Any stormwater system that, that is going to handle any of the runoff from phase one will be constructed. But that which is only for phase two will wait.
So, Mr. Dahlquist, the, the way that the phasing actually worked out, five of the six detention ponds or, or pot- stormwater ponds will actually be constructed with only fifty percent of the site is constructed. So there will be significant over, uh, detention going on until the site is actually built out. Uh, the first pond, rain garden one, rain garden two, rain garden four, rain garden five, and then the infiltration pond that is north of the site will all be constructed, just the way that the, the phasing worked out. The only pond that won't be constructed is rain garden three, which as I said before, really only handles the roadway B and the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I have a question for the granite guys. If we could go back to the slides where you have the site as, right at the beginning, the site as it is and the site as it's going to be, yes. So currently, there's a certain amount of water falls on this site. It rolls off the granite and goes into the wetlands. And then some fraction of that water percolates down into the water table. And some fraction, I gather, runs off in that, uh, culvert into Tobacco Lake, is that right?
Not directly to Tobacco, Tobacco Lake, but under Tobacco Road.
Under Tobacco, and where does it go once it's under Tobacco Road? That goes into a pond, which then goes into the lake? Yes. Okay, so what fraction, you know, percolates as opposed to running off? Would you guess?
So that's, it's, it's not a perfect answer, um, because it's a variation of the soils. And if it's wood or to grass, uh, some soils have different infiltration rates rather than, you know, others that may percolate a little bit more. Um, and then woods has a, a different, allowance for infiltration than, than grass does. So that all culminates into our, our stormwater analysis, which gives us an amount of flow.
Well, that was, that was my next, that was my next question, which is, if you go to the after, okay, after it's done, is the amount that's going under the culvert and into the lake system, does that go up or down? Is it more or less than the amount of water that would run in that way? Pre-development?
The, the peak flow are reduced in the post-development. And that is one of the main goals of providing the stormwater analysis to make sure we're reducing peak flows.
So fe- you know, fear or concern that there's gonna be increased runoff into the system of lakes is somewhat misplaced?
Correct.
Okay.
How do, how does it, uh, how, what causes the drop in the runoff into the lake after construction?
So the, the stormwater ponds are the main mitigation component. Um, and the stormwater ponds have an outlet structure or a series of outlet structures that help restrict the amount of flow and slowly discharge it over the course of twenty-four hours.
Okay, okay.
If you, you see these, you know, once these are constructed, you'll notice that they're, they're big, you know, they're co- square concrete structures with a series of orifices and weirs, um, at certain elevations and certain sizes. And all of those play a huge role into the analysis to help mimic that pre-development flow to make sure we're reducing.
So your system sort of spreads the water around where it can percolate down the, okay.
I, I wasn't done yet. Thank you. Uh, so this is fascinating. So can we get a tour of that after it's done so we can see what it's doing?
Well, uh, unless you can crawl, crawl, if you wanna be there in a rainstorm, but let's not get ahead of ourselves. We haven't permitted this project yet, so.
Thank, yeah.
So other board members have questions?
I have a question about the, um, the cost of this, um, long-term pollution prevention plan and, and the maintenance of all the, um, stormwater, um, systems. And, um, obviously, um, a, a condominium association has the ultimate responsibility for this. But as we know from the tragedy in, um, Florida, that sometimes condominium associations, um, are ineffectual. So in the event that, um, the condo association is unwilling or unable to fulfill its responsibilities under this, um, uh, stormwater, um, operation, um, system, um, then it would seem to me that the town of Hamilton should have the right to engage, a contractor to perform those duties and, and obtain a lien on the, um, condominium association property. Um, and I think that's something that, that, um, legal counsel should look into. Um, because whether i- it's performed or, or performed inadequately, the town should, um, be aware of that and have the opportunity to take measures to, uh, protect the, uh, natural resources adjacent to this site. And so I, I, I am wondering how, how much, um, the annual cost is, and I'm sure it fluctuates and, and, owing to the amount of rainfall in any given year, but I would be interested in knowing that figure.
We haven't hired a contractor yet to do it, but the typical cost is somewhere between twenty-five hundred and three thousand a basin, so, you know, am I, Brett and Jeff, I mean, it's a shot in the dark. You don't really know either, do you?
Well, there's a significant number of systems here that will have to be checked. And if they're have to be checked after each rainfall of a certain magnitude, I mean, I mean, it's, it's not inconsequential work to keep abreast of this and make sure that everything is functioning properly.
So it happens throughout Massachusetts and condominium associations have tremendous control. But I, I mean, we have no problem with the condition that the town could step in. But the situation in, in Florida, I don't, I think there was a little bit different scenario.
No, I, I'm sure, but I mean. Condominium associations generally probably don't want to expend money needlessly. So you could see a situation arising where, um. You know, there might be some penny pinching here, but, uh, there, there, there is a significant interest on the part of the town to make sure. That all these rain gardens and, uh, and ponds and whatnot, um, function properly. And, and if the reports aren't coming in or they seem to be inadequate, the town should be able to have, um, be able to protect.
And I agree. But the board does need to understand that the obligations of a management company or the obligations of trustees. Create tremendous liability to the extent the trustees ignore that responsibility. So they ought not ignore it because there are consequences from the other unit owners. Assumedly, there will be three trustees and forty-seven unit owners who have a vested interest. Um, and, and would not want the town come, becoming involved in, in, you know, levying any time of, of penalty. But with regard to the cost, I'm going to ask, we, as you know, Mr. Smith does run or, um, a condominium association with basins. So, Mr. Smith, can you tell us what is the budgetary item for you for maintaining the stormwater management systems?
It's, it's, it's hard to come up with a number, but it's usually about two thousand dollars a year per basin. Um, but another, two other comments, Marty, to answer your question. Uh, one is that. The, your planning board decision could, um, condition that the. That us as the declarant, uh, and the Future Homeowners Association would have to provide stormwater basin reports over the year to the board. Uh, secondly, when you talk about, um. The condominium association penny pinching, um, we, we typically have every homeowner that moves into the condominium association. Uh, pay five to seven months, um, HOA fees into a reserve fund. So we have a pretty decent sized capital fund. When we hand the condominium association, uh, over to the homeowners association. Uh, that's typically what happens in our world. So, so they're not for a lack of capital funds.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, is that a reserve fund that stays permanent existence or is that just?
Yes, it's a reserve, no, it's a reserve fund and it continues to grow. Because historically condominiums associations are run where a minimum of ten percent of the fees that come in. Are put towards the capital reserve fund. So it grows over a period of time.
Thank you.
I had another question about this, uh, this long-term pollution prevention plan. Uh, will there be, um, any obligations or is this something that the planning board should consider? Uh, requiring, um, uh, organic practices here so that pesticides are not used, um. Uh, on this site. Um, and then just one, one minor comment on page three of the plan, there is a reference to the town of Wilmington. And I think that perhaps, uh, that should be corrected and, and. We, um, uh, use the town of Hamilton instead.
Sorry about that, we'll have that plan corrected right away, Ms. Crouch. I appreciate your diligence in reviewing. And with regard to organic practices, that, organic practices are wonderful, um, but that does not provide for the prohibition against pesticides. So we can absolutely put in place, you know, prohibitions in the, in the stormwater prevention plan. You know, for example, in, in certain areas, don't use certain types of de-icing materials and, and things of that nature. But I have to say that just because something's organic doesn't mean you don't use pesticides or, or other materials. So I think that we just need to, you know, be mindful of what we want to put in place. And we're more than willing to do that. We want to make sure that the environment is sound and, and, and even though it gets treated. That the materials that are getting treated are the least offensive as possible. So I think maybe we could do something in concert with, you know, talking to the, um, Conservation Commission and, and trying to develop a plan in concert with. Our, um, wetland scientists as well, who's very well versed in those things, Ms. Crouch, and we can provide you with something.
Well, I think that would, uh, probably go a long way, uh, to allaying some fears about contamination. Of, um, the water resources and, and also the concerns expressed by the Vandy family.
Oh, of course, if you'd like also, um, our wetland scientist, Mr. Hockworth is on the line and he could potentially address that issue. Would you care for him to do so at this point?
Sure, if no one else has a problem, I don't.
Greg, um, Ms. Rock, can you, um. Just basically explain to, to the board what methods can be put in place to avoid the use of certain chemicals on site? To be able to create, uh, the best environment possible relative to runoff?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Greg Hockmith from Williams and Sprague, just here presenting the applicant. Um, yeah, just about every project that I'm involved with that, um, results in the issuance of an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Uh, there's typically a couple boilerplate conditions that make it into that permit. And one of them is, uh, a restriction on the type of, um, de-icers that are used. As well as the type of fertilizers they use. And we'd be happy to come up with some suggestions that the board could consider, um, for this project as well.
What, what, excuse me, what was the first, the first item you said that was restricted? I couldn't quite hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, it was with respect to de-icers. You know, restricting.
De-icers?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sure, yeah.
I heard fertilizers, I couldn't tell de-icer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, um, it's very common and there's, I can't think of a permit in the last twenty years that I've been involved with that didn't have that as a boilerplate condition. So we can come up with some language the board could consider.
And then that could be attached to the special permit because that would be the controlling document into the SWIP.
What are, what are problems with de-icers? Cause I'm not familiar with that, fertilizers, I understand.
Yeah, it's mainly the salt. You know, the, the salt that used to be used on the roadways and people would put it on their driveways. And eventually everything flows downhill and, uh, most of the work I'm involved with is in and around wetland resource areas. And any increase in, in that type of salt to an aquatic environment can be catastrophic. Uh, so it's really frowned upon.
Okay, I understand, thank you very much.
Sure.
So I'd like to, um, actually, uh, turn to the question and answers that people are, um, asking, um, the audience. One of the things that, that we had.
Can I interrupt just a second?
Sure.
We have our, uh, town peer review engineer, Liz Holtman. I'd like to have her provide the board with the benefit of our peer reviewers' review. Of the, uh, stormwater management plan. I think that would be useful. We have certainly paid for it.
All right, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Chair and, and Patrick, if, uh, Peter Ellison from our office is on the line. And he would be the best person to speak about the stormwater. Peer review. I'm traffic.
We're doing, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you have, if you could promote Peter, he would, um, be the best person to respond to any board questions.
Uh, there's a Pete, I see.
Pete Ellison, yep.
Not sure if this is Pete Ellison, but he's a Pete.
Did that get cut off, is something going on?
No, just vacation.
Mr. Ellison could raise his hand.
I think it's Jenna Ellis.
Oh, it might be Jenna Ellison, that's his. That's his, um. Wife's name. I just texted him to make sure, I thought he was on the line.
Should be all right.
Hey, he's showing up on the screen.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I apologize for the confusion, uh, my name is not Jenna, I am Peter Ellison, uh, from TEC and I'm a civil engineer. Um, who focuses and specializes in, in, uh, stormwater design. Um, and with that being said, I'd, I'd be happy to, um. Just give a brief overview of what my role is on this project and then open it back up to the board to answer any specific questions. Um, so, so my role is, uh, as a civil engineering peer reviewer to. Review the documents that are prepared by Granite Engineering on behalf of the planning board. Um, and come up with, um, any commentary based on state standards. Um, essentially, there are ten stormwater standards that are mandated by Mass DEP. Um, and so what I do is go through their plan set and the stormwater report that accompanies it. And make sure that their, their design is in compliance with those ten standards. Um, as well as just general industry standards that we see in, in this type of project. Um, so I've, I've done that to date. I have, um, reviewed the plans, uh, twice, um, and written and issued comments twice. Um, and I think. I'll, if I could just describe what the system is. Um, I think what they're, they're proposing is a, is a fairly robust stormwater management system. Um, and I have gone through all ten of the state, um, mandated standards. And confirmed that what their design currently shows, or at least what it showed on the, the previous revision plan set. Met those ten standards, fully, fully met the standards. And I guess with that, uh, I would be happy to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, and answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question about this, um, it's, it's called, it's in item number forty-six. If, uh, people have their tech papers handy. It's, it's identified as an NPDES permit, which, um, must be obtained prior to the start of construction. And I did, um, discover that that stands for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit. And so my question was whether that permit has to be obtained prior to blasting. Because I would surmise that that's going to cause just as much disruption to the landscape as the actual construction itself. So I was wondering about the timing of that permit. And, um, just for the education of other board members, that, that's predicated on compliance with the Clean Water Act.
Uh, yes, that's correct. Um, and you're also correct to, uh, assume that that, that permit would be in place prior to the start of any blasting. Um, and the NPT's permit is, uh, specifically linked to the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. That Granite Engineering has, um, kind of discussed and highlighted in their presentation tonight. Um, so the, the SWIP document is the key piece of information that is provided as part of that NPT's permit. Um, and that, that permit is submitted online to the EPA for review. And there's a fourteen day, um, review period for EPA before they issue their permit number. Um, which allows them to, to begin construction.
Do they scrutinize, um, that, that permit application? Or is it relatively routine, um, for the EPA to grant that? And would you be applying to the, um, well, you would be applying to the, the, uh, local EPA office, I assume in Boston?
Um, no, I don't believe so that it would go to the local office. Um, I'm not entirely sure how the, how the EPA reviews it. Um, in my experience, um, the EPA will go through a checklist of items, um, and review. The limits of the project, um, to check on, um, high-level requirements that, you know, are filled out. Um, from a federal standard, um, perspective. Um, for example, are there any federally protected rare species located at the site? Is one of the, one of the things that they will check off their checklist. And they will identify anything that has not been addressed in, uh, the permit application and issue comments at that time. Um, now, as far as review of the SWIP documents. Um, I, in my experience, EPA, um, typically does not get into a detailed review of that document. Um, and actually, in my comment letter, um, dated November thirtieth. I recommended to the board, um. That if they saw fit, they could request that TEC or another third-party engineer could. Provide a review of that SWIP document at the time when that is provided, when that, that, uh, that is prepared by the, the applicant's team. So that, that could be a pretty standard condition of approval.
Uh, yes, I think that would be an excellent idea. I mean, it's just, um, it would serve a useful purpose, uh, for the board to have that oversight. And I think it would, um, uh, be beneficial, uh, for the public to know that, uh, we're taking this very seriously and, and. Looking out for the interest of the public.
Very good, any other questions?
I have a question. Um, thank you for, uh, all the presentations on, um, uh, the. Rain Gardens, uh, by Granite Engineering, that was helpful and useful. My questions are really more out of bounds, I think, of what the, uh, rain gardens are, are capturing. And, uh, maybe if I could just, uh, share my screen for a second, I can point to my question, um.
Jonathan, is this going to include illustrations?
It's a map, so, and it has one illustration.
Well, okay, let's see it, um, because again, if this hasn't been provided to the applicant and gets outside the bounds of this discussion.
What I'll do is I'll, I'll just, um, if somebody can put up. The, say, uh, any of the south, south-facing units with the, the, um. Site grading plan. Okay.
Mr. Cor.
Yes, so, um, so my question is, in the original diagram from Granite Engineering, a number of, um, areas of these, of the slopes. Uh, facing south are kind of outboard of their, um, their strategies for capturing water for the rain gardens. And there's also a series of area drains at the top of that south and, and west-facing slope. And so my first question is, what's the, how do those area drains function at the top of that slope? And there's a number of, uh, two-to-one slopes that then hit rear yards and then hit a bigger two-to-one slope and head down the hill. And then hit the buffer area, which is also close to a two-to-one slope. And then combined with that is, uh, some foundation drains that appear to have point discharge out in that direction. I think there's about twenty-two of them. And. The question is, all of that seems to sort of be out of the, uh, the design of the stormwater. Management strategies of the rain gardens. So, uh, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's, maybe those, those area drains really do pick up that water at the top, very top of the slope. Uh, and then maybe if you could just address the, uh. The. Foundation drains, whether they do have a point discharge, it's twenty-two of them, I think. Uh, the naval point discharge down the south and west-facing slope.
Sure, the, the area drains along this side are, are put in place for collecting the roof water. Uh, the roof water would. If not collecting these area drains, would increase the velocity to these slopes. So, so we thought it was important to make sure we collected that. Uh, we make sure we directed that to the stormwater ponds for treatment. Uh, the. The area drains are hard capped. So they're not they're not in the intent of them is not supposed to collect the lawns. Because it's not required to treat the lawns, nor was it needed to mitigate the lawns. Because we were providing enough mitigation. Through mitigating of roadways. And the roofs of the the buildings, therefore, we didn't have to mitigate any lawns. The foundation drains, minimal water coming from foundation drains, no peak storm events. It's a it's a trickle at most. So there is a point discharge of of foundation drains, which is just. It's just groundwater. So we don't suspect there'll be any issue with with what we've provided.
So and a question for the peer reviewer, given the number of two to one slopes on this. Property and that. A lot of the interior two to one slopes are actually regularly mowed lawns, which. I don't think really slows the runoff or absorbs the runoff very quickly. And that all of that is over, I would imagine, some sort of a structural fill, which I would think would allow water to move fairly quickly. Do you have any concerns about the the amount of two to one slopes? Including. Two to one slopes that are outside of the the requirement of being managed by the rain gardens.
Yeah, I think the I think the two to one slopes are are definitely a concern and something that will need to be monitored closely during construction and beyond. And that is part of. Number one, that will be part of their SWIP document and something that I commented on in my letters for them to include. Some type of erosion control blanket or stabilization measure on those slopes to make sure that we do achieve permanent stabilization. And then beyond that. Those slopes are included in the long term operation and maintenance plan that will be. Overseen by the the homeowners association that that granted and Joe Mann was highlighting earlier. So tho- those I I do agree with you. Those are a concern and will require monitoring. And I think the documents that they've prepared and included in their submittal. Do outline what their plan is to provide not only the construction monitoring. But also the long term monitoring of of those slopes.
I guess my secondary concern is just as a regular use, there's many buildings where you can't get from the front yard to the backyard without. Traversing a fairly significant two to one slope and some of them are, there was a two to one slope, literally building to building, like between unit one and two. And. Aside from this discussion, there's for me, there's some safety and practicality issues, but just in terms of maintenance. These are dense sites and just to get, like I say, from from one side of the building to the other, front yard to backyard. You need to traverse these slopes and if you traverse them in the same spot, that just wears the grass out and it's it's all two to one slope is already. Exceeds the recommended slope for mowed grass. And this 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 condition is everywhere on the site. So so I have significant concerns about this and. Beyond monitoring, it just seems like there's some concerns about good practice here.
Okay. I have a follow up question to that because this is something that that I found a little puzzling. So I think it was item number twenty seven on the August thirtieth. Tech document. And. You recommended that a fence be used on a three to one slope. Where pedestrians and cyclists may be, and it was in relation to probably a rain garden or something like that. But if if that's recommended for a three to one slope, that there'll be some safety fencing. Doesn't it logically follow that there be some safety fencing with respect to two to one slopes? Because when we started talking about slopes, I I'm not, you know, an engineer. I don't have any real background in this and and my last foray into mathematics was. When I was in college. So I I actually went and tried to understand what a two to one slope looked like. And I went to the University of Google, which is a a tried and true method of obtaining information. And what I learned was that at least on highways, if there is a two to one slope. There's by definition, a requirement for a guardrail. So I do have, you know, a question about that and and. I I have to take take it on faith from Jonathan that there are an abundance of two to one slopes and that has been con- confirmed. So is there a safety issue with respect to that? And bearing in mind that this is senior housing? And and. You know, obviously, the older people get, sometimes they have problems with their balance.
Well, Marty, we're getting outside stormwater management plan here.
Well, no, the two to one slopes are implicated here because of the necessary for erosion control.
Right, but you're going you're going into safety now, not stormwater.
That was an item that was raised by our peer reviewer in item number twenty seven. So.
Right, with three with three to one slopes, you're right, not two to one slopes.
Well, a two to one slope is steeper than a three to one slope.
So we're we're getting outside that discussion into safety and slopes, not stormwater management here.
Well, we can ask the question later, then, I guess. We could answer it now or we can answer it later, but the question remains.
It's an easy, easy answer, if I may, Mr. Mitchell. Number one, the many of the two to one slopes are not grass. They actually have meadow mix, so they're going to be planted and then they'll be. You know, pruned every once in a while, so they're not going to be mowed. That's not our intention. And Granite Engineering can address it and Granite Engineering can show you where we even where the two to one slopes are that we will, in fact, put up fencing. So we we did hear that. Issue and we did address it.
We sure we sure did. Mr. Ellison's comment.
About two, two to one versus three to one.
So just hold on a second. Let's let's let him finish the discussion on the fencing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellison's comment was directed to areas of high pedestrian traffic. Those areas are. Paths that were redirected along the berm of a stormwater pond. So the stormwater pond berm is wide enough to allow a path, which allows interconnection to the existing paths that are out there. Mr. Ellison's comment, which was a valid one, was to add a fence along that area to prevent anyone from. You know, navigating into the stormwater pond into an area where pedestrians really should not be. So so fences and similar to guardrails are put in place in areas of a higher risk because there's more pedestrians. So there are two to one slopes on the site, Mrs. Crouch, and we do have guardrails in the areas that warrant guardrails.
All right. Thank you for that answer. Appreciate it.
Well, I I've got a question along those same lines that you're talking about fencing and and safety. Those two areas where you have a vertical ledge, one about thirty feet high, one about twenty feet high. And then you have a four foot chain link fence set in. Looks like maybe. Fifteen feet in from the edge of the. The question I have, what is to prevent someone from actually walking up from the end of that, like at the. Opening from Chabaco Road there on this particular drawing? Walking up between the fence and the ledge and climbing to the top of that wall. That's twenty feet off the top of the road.
I mean, we can't stop. Prevent. Honest to God, I mean, we put up a fence, we tell people not to do it and.
No, I'm just asking.
You know what I'm going to say, right?
What is what is the regulation, though? Is there one that requires you to?
No, there's the day. It basically says, use a reasonable control methodology, and we do. We put up a fence. If somebody's going to be, you know, personally negligent to to walk in front of it, they can also, you know, pole vault over it as well. I mean, you can't stop.
It could be a visiting grandchild or something, taking their bike up the hill there or something. I don't know.
It'd be pretty, it'd be very, very, very difficult to do, but we will put in place measures to prevent, you know, unwarranted trespass at that point.
I I'd like to move on and give the public the chance to ask questions. That's what something we discussed about taking smaller bites here and giving the public. Chance to ask questions, so I'd like to go there. So Pat Norton.
Yeah, Christina has her hand up.
Okay. And there's and then this question is an ant. Oh.
Yeah, there's one as well.
Yeah, you want to have, I can put Chris on. There she is. Go ahead, Christina.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your time, the board, and your consideration on this. It just seems like being on these meetings, particularly this one. That this is a really complex project, and I think we can all agree with that. And it seems like there's good plans in place, but it seems. Low risk. But high consequence. And that's someone who. Is really concerned about. Water contamination, because that's how we. This is our drinking water. So. It it feels like there's can be a lot of regulation in place, but. How do how do we actually know that all this regulation is gonna? You know. Actually. Be supported. I mean, we're talking about people when they stay in their houses, when they wash their cars, when they use pesticides, when they use bleach. So we're very concerned about it because we're invested. It's our water. But we're talking about not five years out, ten years out, twenty years out. It's a lot of trust to put into. A homeowners association. So my first question is. It feels like we're trying to, I mean, we sound like monkeys, actually. I'm just going to be honest about it. It feels like we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, and I'm wondering if there's any other location in Hamilton that we can do this project. Has that been considered? Number one.
That's outside this discussion.
Okay, fine. The the second one is. If our drinking water is contaminated. What is the plan? Because. We're talking about water and soil. Right? So there's a lot of science, but there's also common sense. So we can do our best to. Direct this into rain gardens and everything we've developed. But we there's no guarantee, right? We don't we. We can't consider all factors. It's water and soil. So I'm asking if our drinking water is contaminated, and this is our resource water for a couple of towns here, what what is the plan?
I don't really know what the question is. So are you asking if the development itself and the stormwater runoff, if that is going to contaminate the water?
No, I'm saying there's a chance that that it can contaminate the water.
There is, okay, there is.
There there might be low, it might be a low chance, but there still is a chance. You cannot hundred percent guarantee that our drinking water, you can put all this in place.
That that's true. There's a hundred percent chance. Anything happening. That's the that's how life occurs. And we're using the best available. Regulations and science to determine if that if in fact, this can be done safely. Environmentally to an environmentally sensitive area. And. We're taking extra precautions to make sure that that's that's happening.
I appreciate that. And 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 yet, it it's. It's still a high consequence if it happens, because there is still a chance that it can. So my question is.
I think you have to.
Yeah, but we have choice here. But we have choice here.
Development can create consequences. Regulations to try and prevent.
Right, right, but this is.
Not develop any any piece of land anywhere.
That's my question. Then is there another place that we can do this that?
No.
Gone to a lot of constraints, like we. To try to figure out how not to contaminate the water. Is there another place in Hamilton where we can do this?
Christina, that's outside this discussion. This is a project that is being proposed on that site. That's what we're considering. We can't work. It's not the planning board's role to say. We don't like this, move it someplace else. This is private property, that this is private property. The applicant has developed these plans. They're before the planning board. Were engaged in a right, a very complex technical discussion. Were engaging experts in hydrology, geohydrology, civil engineering, environmental engineering. To cover and uncover every possibility and opportunity. To make this a project that is as safe as possible. Now. That's all we can do, and there is no guarantee in life about anything. So.
I I appreciate that, and I also appreciate as a board. And and as a town, what we gain. Right, what 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 our interest is too. So I get the development, like their the project's interest. What is our interest? And how do we best do this for our town?
Can I respond to some of this?
Go ahead.
Okay, this is a private development, ma'am. We don't, we are not promulgating it. We did not request it. We did not go out and ask for bids on it. This is a private property development, one place. And that's it. And it's the it's the owner of the property that has brought this forth. This is not a town project. And it is not our place to tell the owner to say, go do this project somewhere else, because. It's all about this one piece of property. So I understand. Your concerns. I understand what you're asking, but it's just not a. Feasible type of question.
I understand, but we do as a town and as a board have choice, right?
No, we don't have choices. We are.
We we have choice about whether this project is.
Okay, I I don't want to get into an argument here. If you have a specific question, we'd be happy to answer it, but we can't get into a philosophical discussion here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick.
I get that. That's a bit unfortunate, but yes, I understand.
You know what I think?
Thank you.
Mitchell is the appropriateness of the location is demonstrated by the fact that we are not in. We're not in a wellhead protection area. We're not in a surface water protection area. It's actually an appropriate location. And I I believe you're from Manchester and your own your own board has said that we're so far away from the well protection areas that we don't pose a risk to the water supply. We comply with all of the standards for the Clean Water Act. We're going to file a Nipte's permit. We're going to undertake a SWIP. We comply completely with stormwater regulations. Our Title V septic system is completely compliant. There's absolutely nothing to indicate any heightened risk, including. Any of the construction work that's going to be on the site. So that is a response to your question.
And yes, but there's still not a hundred percent guarantee.
Again, you know.
I'm just saying.
We're done. We're done. We're done. So if you, thank you. All right. Can we go on to other people that have other questions?
Mr. Ellison has her hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to go to the public though first before we get to. Save Chabaco Woods.
Oh, Alda Groot.
Let's let's start taking them from the earliest to the later. I'll just read these. That's okay with the board. I'm a science educator and it's not fear, and yes, it is science. There's a hundred percent chance that migratory wetland animals will be heavily impacted. There's no survey of migratory amphibians. How can you say this is fear based when we already know what lives are, how? Why their migratory roots are. Can't answer that question. That's kind of a general statement. It hardly seems appropriate to have Miss Man up there on screen with the board members right now. Or just having their opening discussion. It makes it look as though Miss Man is working with the board and the board is working with her, when in fact she is asking board permission for something. Miss Man represents the applicant. The applicant is before the board to make a presentation on technical information in order to be. In conformance with a myriad of zoning and environmental, state and local. Bylaws. That's her job is to answer the questions that the board has put before her and are required to be answered. By many elements of the zoning bylaw. That's her job and that's the way we do this. Just to be clear, all the real science is coming from the. Just to be clear, all the real science is coming from the developers and everyone else in the community. Not part of the development. It's apparently purely for fear-based, and our concerns won't be considered. Well, I think you've heard tonight, uh, the board has been quite diligent in asking some very detailed questions about this applicant and the technical information that's been presented. In addition, uh, we have an independent, objective peer review, uh, looking at all this information to make sure that it's actually correct and in conformance with the requirements of state, federal, and local laws. Is there a failure, if there is a failure and the water supply becomes contaminated, who is responsible? Who's going to fix it, assuming? What is the remedy for the three towns who need this water? Well, I think we just had that discussion. All appropriate and legally required protections are being considered and will be demanded to be implemented before we even consider whether to approve this. Stormwater management controls primarily focus, focus primarily on what will be in place for the completed proposed project. My concern is about the impacts during significant storms, like fifty to a hundred year storm during the site development blasting, hitting rock and soil movement process. How will erosion and stormwater runoff impacts be managed and prevented in the middle of construction of this? Um, I think we covered that, but if anybody has any other comments to make, be happy to entertain those. We talked about the stormwater implementation plan during construction. And we have the engineers answer, not, the engineers have been answering questions for granted engineering. How many two-inch rain events are there per year in Hamilton? How do a butter, Hamilton citizens confirm the homeowners association is performing adequate maintenance during the course of the year? Can the rain basin be planted with native plant? I'll let somebody, Brandon, answer those questions.
Sure, I can, I can answer. The, the first question, I, I don't know how many two-inch rainstorm events happen in Hamilton per year. Um, but I do know that we designed the stormwater basins to handle a, a two-inch um, storm event, um, as well as a ten-inch and all the way up to a hundred-year storm event. So I don't think it matters on how many happens in a year, more of just that it, it can withstand the two-year storm event. Uh, I'm going to skip B, because I think Jill may have already answered that, but C, the, uh, the rain basin be planted with native plants. Uh, so some of the plants may be native, uh, to this area, but we have a specific plant species that we have to plant in these rain gardens. Um, they have to be a plant that's hardy enough to handle stormwater, uh, to be, provide that uptake, um, so that we can get treatment. And MAF DEP has a series of plants that they recommend, that we pulled from that list, um, where they have tested the plants and made sure that they are adequate for a rain garden.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question, is Hamilton prepared to take upon perpetual policing of the yearly environmental inspection? What authority does a town have, and how is it accounted for in its budget? Well, I think we have addressed that. Um, Marnie asked some very detailed questions about that and homeowners association. And, um, so we, that was my first question, how, how that's going to occur. So I think we've answered that question. How will a site be controlled during blasting? Are there active trails very close to the site? People walking as surrounding trails be hit with by flying rock? Or will the tobacco woods need to be shut down during construction for safety? Well, in the immediate area, it's private property, so there shouldn't be anybody on those trails. I don't, Jill or one of the, maybe granted engineering can talk about the blasting and people being hit by flying rock.
We use, so if I may, uh, we use, we use blasting mats to ensure and prevent that. Number one, number two, the site will be completely fenced and encased. It, it, the existing trails aren't even available onsite, and it isn't proximate enough to any of the other off-site trails to cause any issue. And again, we use blast mats. So you put them on, you actually, there's a plan in place under the control blasting plan to prevent just that, because I agree, if you don't know how close it is, you get concerned about what the effects of blasting could be, but that actually is controlled in the blasting plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. I've heard of that before.
There will likely be a large amount of traffic created after development is fully occupied. The town of Hamilton be obligated to put a traffic signal at the end intersection of. We haven't gotten to the traffic plan yet, so wait for that one. Is the hydro seeding that was mentioned of soil, mentioned simple grass, or is it a combination of native seed that would be planned with a local habitat? What percentage of green grass, which typically is heavy, has heavy load of fertilizers?
So with regard to that, yes, it is a mix. We, I can have granted address it, and we did minimize the amount of grass as much as possible, as you can tell from the site. But Brent and Jeff, and with regard to the fertilizers, that was something that brought up by Ms. Crouch. So we will have in place a requirement to limit certain types of chemicals onsite. So Brent and Jeff, if you could please answer the question about planting?
Sure, I think it's to be a good opportunity to show the, the robust landscape plan that we have. Um, the, the landscape architect has provided us with the hydroseed mix that will uh, be best suited for the slopes out there. Um, it's a combination of creeping red fescue, Kentucky domestic rye, a red top, and a clover mix that the hydro cedar will have to follow.
Okay, thank you. It was mentioned that a member of the housing, homeowners association would inspect the drainage. Shouldn't a professional be doing the inspections? Yes. I think that was and we've talked about requiring, and that is a condition that it be professionally done. I'm looking at your planting species list and wondering why you are including, why you are including native species. Why you are putting native species? Only a few of the species on your list are appropriate to a Beechham lot, or some aren't even natives to Massachusetts. Who composes this list and what the forest ecologist consulted? Brandon?
Next line.
We, we really aren't, we didn't have the landscape person here, because this wasn't supposed to be part of the conversation. Yeah, we purposely changed the plantings to actually reflect an A species. I, I I mean, granted, didn't do the landscape plan either. Granted, do you, you have anything to add to that? I mean, I think we need to, this has to come up at an appropriate time.
Okay.
Right, the land, that would probably be best, but some of the plantings he spec were from MAF DEP, um, so they may be the ones that she's alluding to.
This question is, what are the consequences of mitigating, if, if mitigating measures fail and our drinking water is contaminated? Who is liable? Well, um, the question is, where is that contamination coming from? And how do you determine that, I would think? So, uh, and I, as we've discussed in great detail, there are going to be five monitoring wells that are constructed before construction begins, and will be monitored during construction and after construction to determine if in fact there are, is any kind of un, unanticipated pollution occurring, unless, and if somebody has anything more to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, that's entirely correct. Uh, we have, it's actually our eight onsite monitoring wells to ensure. Um, and the watershed here is huge, that is a contributing factor. We are a very, very, very small portion of that. So, I mean, the consequences of contaminating the drinking water are plentiful and from sources other than this particular property. But notwithstanding that, our property is controlled. Um, we will have a NIPD's permit in place, and we are controlled. And we can have very negative effects to the extent there are consequences, but we still monitor, and we still will have in place remedial measures to make.
Uh, can I ask a corollary question, Jill?
Well, we're, we're, we're going through, uh, we're going through the, um, public's questions now. Richard, so if you could hold on to that?
Yep, thank you.
Can the chair please remind the petitioner that the retard area surrounding the proposed development of the three, on three sides does indeed flow into the Manchester watershed and would have implications on the drinking water for the pub, public for several towns. I think, uh, everybody is well aware of that. I'm new to these meetings and have a question unrelated to the tobacco development. My question is, with regards to the affordable housing development on Asbury Street, let you know how and when to jump in. I don't want to interrupt the discussion on tobacco. Perhaps someone can reach out to you directly as discussed offline. Thank you so much. Amanda, you should be talking to Marnie Crouch. And Marnie Crouch is the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and she's also a member of the planning board, so I think she could help you there. Uh, anonymous attendee, interesting that some members of the board, yeah, some member of the board, or opposed the Perry Project and Harbor Light's project was going to affect their own property environment, but not this project. Helping the board, but truly looks at this thoughtfully, with the same keen eye, they look at projects surrounding their own property in Hamilton. And you promise us this project will be given the same careful consideration? Are you planning on putting light, a light in Essex? Uh, will be wrote, um, and that's under traffic. This board is almost entirely new, except two members, so I have no idea what you're talking about as it relates to Perry Project and the Harbor Light Project. Uh, and I can tell you from my position, uh, I did not oppose it, and I don't think Richard did, so.
It was something with one of the way past.
And I know, yeah, I got, I got it covered. So, all right.
Thank you.
That's the end of the questions. So, all right. Um, and I see we've got probably somebody else that would like to, uh, make a comment. Anybody else here? Hello, we, we have.
Thank you.
So this will be specific to the stormwater management plan?
First of all, I just want to address that in an earlier conversation, in the first conversation, uh, when Christina was speaking, and, uh, it was spoken of that, when it was spoken of that this is private land, absolutely understand, this is a quite an involved, uh, stormwater management plan that's been put in for, in front of us, and that's great that the energy has been put into that, but it is still the board's responsibility. If I'm incorrect, tell me that the developer, the petitioner needs to be granted a special permit. Is that correct? To do this project.
Correct.
So there is discussion as to whether this project makes sense on so many levels, and in that it is incredibly, I heard so many comments, need to monitor closely. This is all around storm management and the storm management system that's been put before us. Long-term plan, the homeowners association, it's up to them to maintain, and, uh, I believe I heard quite clearly that it often is put out to a third party to do that maintenance, but it can be done by the homeowners association directly. So unless, is that correct?
Well, we can, I think as, I think as we discussed, we can make it a condition of the special permit approval that it be done by an independent third party.
That's, I hadn't heard that from the petitioner. And that may be true. So, uh, all of these, I heard so many things. If this all goes well, if this all goes right, if this all goes the way it's intended, and a lot of money, time, and energy has been put into this plan to assure the best possible outcome. But there are all kinds of things that can go wrong that need to be monitored. Human error is certainly a possibility here, and if it weren't as environmentally a sensitive area, that would all make sense. But as we've heard over and over and over and over again, I hope the board is paying a lot of attention, even though seemingly dismissing the issue of the potential damage to the watershed for three towns, the drinking water, the three towns. A decision made today by you folks, not today literally, on this project by you folks to grant a special permit seems totally irresponsible, given where this is located in the environmentally sensitive area, and the potential potential risk, when so many, I have a list of all the words and phrases that talked about the risks and the management and the need to be monitored closely and homeowners association take responsibility, and long-term the board, uh, or the town, taking on responsibility to monitor and enforce. So all of that's great in a perfect world, but this world is not perfect. And this environment that they're planning on building this develop, proposing to build this development is a highly sensitive area, and the land is not perfect, and it's not going to necessarily go exactly as planned. It seems like, uh, the least that should be required is a hydrological study to really look at the four seasons of the year and what happens. To think about hundred-year storms, ten-year storms, not as that it only happens once in a hundred years, given the environment and what's going on in the environment, hundred-year storms could happen every three years. So I just think that it is clearly in my mind, the board's responsibility, before even thinking about granting a special permit, that the environmental issues be strongly considered and be grounds enough to deny the special permit. So that is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So.
Who is that speaking, Rick, please?
That was Al DeGru.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Another thing, just Mr. Boroff, he's never, never followed your request or your, uh, that he follow up, and he's the one who seems to not quite get that this is a special permit, and it can be denied, and it seemed earlier in this conversation. When he interrupted, it seemed that he still doesn't quite get that, and he never made that apology that he was requested to make, so I think his credibility here is quite questionable. Thank you.
All right, so I think we had, um, Ms. Eliasen wanted to I don't see her. Deborah, you're connected.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, sixty-three Middle Street, Gloucester. I represent Save Tobacco Watershed and Trails, and as I'm sure you know that Save Tobacco represents thousands of residents of the, um, town of Hamilton, and speaks on their behalf. I would like to address a few things that were brought up initially and then address the stormwater issues. There have been some statements made that the information that's been provided by Save Tobacco has been inaccurate, it's been erroneous.
Hold on, hold on, that, you're getting into a letter that has not been, has not been, um, made public, and so we want to make sure we're focused on the stormwater elements.
Well, actually, there were comments made at the beginning of this meeting to that.
Okay, okay, but.
That's what I'm addressing.
Okay, good.
Not the letter.
Good.
So I would like to point out that Save Tobacco has gone through the expense of hiring very well-respected experts in this field. Ransom Consulting and Mary Rimmer from Rimmer Associates, they are all very well-respected experts. And so to say that it is just, um, or make it sound like it's a bunch of laymen giving you information is, is inaccurate. We also have respected community members who are professionals in this area, who have agreed with our experts, and the peer reviewers have raised many of the issues that we have raised. So we do welcome your questions, and we welcome the opportunity to provide responses to you along with the applicant, and to show you that this is science on our side also. With regard to the condominium associations, I have to disagree with Ms. Man. Uh, my, in my experience, they do not always pay close attention to what they are supposed to do with regard to long-term monitoring, et cetera. And you only find that out when there's a problem. So, uh, this is a town, you have limited. And you only find that out when there's a problem. So uh this is a town, you have limited staffing, you also have volunteer boards. I'm certain that there are just not enough people or time or money to be monitoring uh development with this type of uh this type of scale. Also, Ms. Man mentioned several times with regard to de-watering and other aspects during construction that we'll just figure it out as we go. Um, they also talked about the Niptys um permit and the plan that will be filed. We heard from your expert from tech that it's those plans are not given strict scrutiny. So I do believe that that is something that you would want be to be presented to you so that you can look at it. You're familiar with this site. You are familiar with the peculiarities of the site. And so you could be a much better critique of that plan to make sure that it does protect the site. With regard to stormwater under um senior housing bylaw eight point two point twenty, they are required to make sure that they comply with both the state and local stormwater codes. I heard the town's peer reviewer mentioned that he had examined their plan based on the state code, and I would suggest that you would also want him to look at your local bylaw. But I also want to remind you that these are minimum requirements. They're minimal codes. That's what they're made for. That's the minimum that you have to follow. And just because the developer meets those standards doesn't mean that they mean that they have met the requirements of the bylaw. Your bylaw, in addition to saying you have to meet the state and local stormwater regs, goes on to say specifically, and I quote, general soil erosion of the proposed development site shall be minimized by integrating the development into the existing terrain and by reasonably retaining natural grades and soil cover. The developer has not done that. We've heard over and over about the steep slopes and the massive um rock removal that is going to be needed to develop this site. The entire upland is being stripped down to the bedrock and the steep slopes dead end into the wetland buffers. So the developer has done the bare minimum to meet the state and local requirements perhaps. Um, but they have not followed what the bylaw requires. And under eight point two point thirty-one point two, also the senior housing bylaw, it states that you're required to make a finding that the developer has mitigated impact to abutting land and natural resources by reason of stormwater runoff. Again, I would suggest that you cannot find that. And now I would like to have our experts from ransom, Tom Henigan, speak to the stormwater issues from a technical perspective. If you would allow that, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I believe he has to be promoted.
All right. Good evening. Um, again, Tom Henigan from Ransom Consulting. Uh, thanks again for the time. Good evening. I'd like to share my screen if I could. I just have one, one graphic to share that would uh points if I could.
Go ahead.
Yep. Can you, let's see.
Yep.
You see that? Okay. All right, great. Um, as far as the stormwater design, as was mentioned earlier, um, I think by Mr. Ellison from uh from T E C. Um, it is a robust design and you know, certainly the, the engineers from Granite have done a good job on an extremely complicated, extremely complicated site. Um, the stormwater design has been peer reviewed, as we've acknowledged and, and um you know, checks the boxes as required by D E P's policy. So I didn't want to focus on that. I wanted to talk just a little bit about uh more on the erosion control side. And obviously the steep slopes that we've, that have already been discussed. And I know there was some previous discussion this evening between Mr. Poor and Mr. Ellison about this. So I'll try to um address some um, some new, new aspects um of this point. But um on the screen, uh sort of put together the applicant's um grading plan here and just highlighted um in that pink or purple color, depending on your screen, um where are those two to one slopes that we've been talking about exist? And um, as you can see, they, you know, they exist primarily around the perimeter and then, then a large swath through the middle. Um, but also in numerous areas, just even between some of the houses. On this figure, you can also see uh around the perimeter, the yellow line that, that immediately abuts the the edge of those steep slopes in a lot of areas. And that is the hundred foot buffer zone um to the wetlands. You know, now part of the reason, you know, the steep slope, the slopes are so steep was to, was to tie these grades in, you know, prior to um, prior to reaching a hundred foot buffer zone to keep um, to keep the project out of the conservation commission's um jurisdiction. Now, in general, you know, two to one slopes in construction aren't, you know, aren't uncommon. Um, but I think that in this case, it's, it's the, the quantity of them that, you know, that um kind of raises concerns for me in, in my experience. Um, now the applicant has mentioned that um and it was included in the peer review comments that erosion control fabric would be used on the slopes. But I think that um and I think in the, in the nodes or in the details that was required, that the erosion control fabric would be used on slopes um anywhere from three to one or steeper. So we're at two to one, which is obviously steeper than three to one. And and really approaching any steeper, we're really getting to the point where you, you'd want slopes to be reinforced with, you know, with, with stone rather than, than vegetation. So you know, we're getting to the, the kind of the upper limits of, of sort of natural grade. You know, and my concern too is, is during construction. And again, that point's been raised, but you know, there's some steep slopes on the site today. Uh, but those have the benefit of, you know, long established root systems and vegetation, the forest stuff and, you know, just long periods of con consolidation and settlement um that kind of stabilized those slopes. As these slopes are constructed, there's going to be new material, um, you know, new lawman seed added to the top in some areas. It may be over a small amount of fill immediately above, you know, the exposed rock. Um, the erosion control fabric is going to protect that surface railing and the, and the rutting and the erosion. But particularly during, you know, some larger storm events as, as you know, water initially infiltrates into the um into the soil and runs down those slopes that, that top layer, that fresh top layer of soil that's just been placed. It doesn't have the benefit of stabilization from the roots and, and um, and the vegetation is going to be, you know, susceptible to erosion. So um, when that layer on a steep slope gets saturated, you know, it has the, you know, the potential to, to slough off or, or um, or slide, you know, beyond just um the, the railing or the erosion channels that the, the erosion control, erosion control fabric is protecting against. You know, and on top of that, you know, the area above those slopes as they manage a site during construction may not be vegetated, you know, and there may be larger in before they get all those erosion controls and stormwater systems in place. There may be more water um flowing over relatively impervious surfaces um that could damage those damage those slopes. Now, in the corner, this bottom corner of the screen here, you can see this is the, this is the um twelve inch diameter erosion control sock that um silk sock that they've, they've mentioned as being the erosion control to protect um the down gradient resources. Now, one other concern about this is I've just sort of sketched in here. Um, as you can see, um you know, this erosion control sock needs to be installed somewhere between the edge of those purple slopes and that yellow, uh the yellow line, which is, is the clearing limit. So that two to one slope is going to come down right to that edge and, and that erosion control uh needs to be installed right there at the edge. So first, if we had any type of failure, um, you know, it doesn't take much on these slopes, which tend to be it range anywhere from twelve fifty to eighteen vertical feet from top to bottom. And if you get a slope failure, a material coming down, it doesn't take much to inundate um a twelve inch diameter um silt sock with, you know, with sediment. But if you look at the, the grading plan, there's very difficult to get equipment in to the bottom of this two to one slope that that ties in immediately at the clearing limits of the project to get equipment in there to repair erosion controls, to pull back soil that might have come down or, or is starting to to kind of go over those erosion controls. So it's a matter of, you know, kind of planning and good housekeeping. Um, as has been said by others, you know, um, you know, we have the best laid plans here, but if there's a problem, you know, here's a there's potential issues on how that gets cleaned and maintained. And again, this is a very large earthwork operation. Um, and it's going to take a long time to get to the point where these where these slopes are stabilized. Now, if you think about vegetation and, and that getting to a critical mass where that slope can stabilize itself. For instance, if you're dealing with a you know, athletic field, for example, a brand new flat field, you're not going to, it's going to be a couple of growing seasons before you're even going to let anybody use that. It's going to be several growing seasons here before, you know, I think that vegetation is going to be robust enough to really protect itself, given the given the steepness and the length of some of those slopes. So um, again, just going back to um Attorney Ellison's initial comments, if we're going to integrate this site into the terrain um of the site, then you know, the, the height and, and quantity of two to one slope seems um seems a little bit excessive. And, and I will just reiterate in my experience, um, the same that the, the SWIP plan that gets generated um tends to be pretty generic and not, not reviewed in a lot of thoroughness um by the EPA. And um, we heard a couple of comments earlier about how, you know, the SWIP prevents and provides a number of tools and mechanisms that can be used for erosion control. And it sounds like the applicant is just pushing that onto the contractor and there's not a um beyond the phasing plan that just shows a dotted line down the middle of the site. There's not a, there's not, we still haven't seen kind of a soils management plan to show where things are going to get processed, how much material has to be brought in. Um, you know, how that's going to be accomplished or any kind of interim grading plans. Um, it sounds like that's just going to be pushed to the contractor and, and let them solve that. So given a side of this sort of complexity, um you know, I, I would think that you want to see your little more advanced planning sort of step by step versus versus the, we got it covered. Don't worry about it approach. So um, that is um that's what I have for today. I appreciate your time. Thank you once again.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. So you've identified certain areas of concern uh based on your experience in similar type projects. Uh, are there techniques for preventing the kind of um uh overloading of the soil erosion barriers that you've illustrated on, on the bottom right?
Well, you know, there's um you know, potential to add a silk fence to that, which provides a little more height, a little more, a little more protection. As I said, you know, if you get a, if you get a major slope failure, you're going to have a lot of soil coming down that hill. Um, and that twelve inch berm can be can be inundated pretty quickly. But I think normally too is to have more room beyond that. Um, right now, where this site is sort of packed right out to the edges. You know, and there's not, like I said, there's not a lot of room to get in there to maintain things. Um, you know, if you, if you had any issues. You know, you have a, you have a slope that you're trying to vegetate. Um, and if normally you would want to go out there with additional materials to beef up or repair the erosion controls, you know, you probably drive and contract will be driving some type of side by side, you know, vehicle or some other vehicle. And you're then potential to disturb, you know, the the exact areas that you're trying to, trying so hard to uh, you know, to stabilize. So um, it'd just be nice to have a little more, see a little more working room there to be able to inspect and maintain those erosion controls.
So would that working room be to the right of the um illustration where you show, I think, grass flowing?
Well, that's their detail. That would norm, in, in this situation, on the other side of that slope, that's, that's, you know, that's the clearing limit. That's the edge of the barrier that they're going to clear.
Right. So they would have to access the erosion control outside?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. Is that a doable? Is that doable?
Well, well, technically, no, they'd have to, if that's, that's part of the plan, I would think they would want to have to address that with the conservation commission. Again, you know, the, in my looking from the outside, looking in, the reason that the slopes stop where they stop is to keep the project outside of conservation commission jurisdiction. So there's, that's really a no disturb area for them at this point.
Okay. So, so the illustration that you've shown there with the erosion control, could you recommend an alternate that would be more substantial?
Well, again, you could have, you know, you, you could have a, a lot of times you have sort of a redundant system with, with a, with a straw bale or that silt sock together with some silt fence. And it provides sort of, it does provide additional protection, but it doesn't solve the problem of, of sort of, you know, maintenance.
May I make one observation um in addition to what's been called out about this plan here for just a moment? I just want to call attention to the fact that in the lower um part of the sheet, the two to one slope is actually into the required um natural buffer that's required um on this site that showed up in my forest, uh, the forest sort of management plan that I submitted prior. So in other words, if they need to go fix something that gets damaged at the bottom of this sheet, they're actually off the property. It's a property line at the bottom there. They're, they're into the twenty foot required uh buffer that's, they're supposed to be around the development in this whole bottom quadrant of the cul-de-sac. That's all.
A other question from the board? Any comment?
Yeah, I, I just have a question, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for Tom, that uh, a lot of times when you look at a project like this, one question you could ask, if this were to fail, where would you see the first inclination of a failure in a system like this? With the extent of the steep slopes around the perimeter and so forth. Is there an area here that would be the first uh, uh, part of this to go? Thinking primarily of the transitions, perhaps, you know, from uh old to new.
Right, right. Yeah. And I think partly based on, you know, based on the height and extent of, of the slope, you know, that this, I don't think you see my cursor, but um, you know, this corner here. You know, would definitely be one, the other, the other, you know, potentially, and it's not, it's not, it's more internal to the site, but this area here, which, you know, that's um you know, there's actually from the finished floor from between these two buildings on either side of this slope, there's about twenty-five twenty-five vertical feet difference in the finished floor elevation uh between those two units. And and obviously, I, I, you know, I think part of the reason the phasing was selected through here, um, you know, was because of this, this kind of rock transition. So there's potentially, if, if this is vegetated, you'll, you'll have um, you know, you'll have some new soil. Um, I would anticipate that you'd have some new soil, very thin layover on top of rock. And obviously that would, you know, could become saturated pretty quickly and, and fail um that way. But those are the two that would jump out at me.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have one more question. So in a lot of the uh conditions where the two to one slopes actually aim at buildings instead of um buffer zones, they, they run right up against the protection slope that's required by code around the building. So for example, between units one and two, the protection slope, which is required to be ten feet, is only, I don't know, five, six, seven feet with a eighteen feet drop aiming at it. Now, there's more of that occurring in various places along the eastern side of the property. And the way this grading plan is shown, you have basically a two to one slope uh meeting a protection slope almost as a crease. There's no transitions, there's no gentle transitions. And a question for you, in my, in my experience, when you have that kind of a crease in the, in the, in the slopes, it's not very stable. What happened, what I find happens is that, that uh, the two to one slope wins and it starts silting in the protection slope and starts to actually move the, the bottom of the swale over because it's, it's sort of designed like a crease, like a fold instead of a swale. I just like, can you, can you address that a bit for me?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think, yeah, I think you're on the right track. I mean, anytime you have to, like I said, without, where they, where things come together in form of V, I mean, it just becomes a channel and there, where there's a potential to scour. Um, so yeah, but that's potentially a problem. Ideally, you know, would like to see some gentler, gentler transitions.
And that, and that, there's a lot of that on this site.
Yeah, the, the transitions are abrupt. Yeah.
Anything else from the board? Okay, um, do we want to have uh anybody from Granite comment on this?
Yeah, sure. I think that would be helpful. So we under, we understand um Mr. Henigan's comments. Um, and we thought about this during the. So we under, we understand um Mr. Henigan's comments, um and we thought about this during the design. Um, it i- it is very common, more common than Mr. Henigan would lead on to have your silt sock. Or silt fence um along the limits of disturbance. A lot of the times, the slope, toe slope does come down to that limit of disturbance, and we're not opposed to a silt fence. Instead of a silt sock, which is a little bit more higher. Again, this is a measure that is in the SWIP plan. That if the contractor feels is more appropriate, he could switch that out. Uh, we went with a silt sock. It's a, it's a little bit more environmentally friendly. Um, but in areas that they found to be a little more highly erodible, um, they can certainly swap that product. To a silt fence. They could add double silt fence. They could add a silt fence to the top of the slope if they found that. Erosion was occurring in that area. We we've designed a site to prevent as much stormwater that runs over these steep. These these slopes, these two to one slopes. The roofs are not directed to them. There's no stormwater areas directed to them. There's no roadways directed to them. So really, the only areas are loam and seed that are typically in still areas. That'll be permeable through the soils and the slope itself. Um, they are seeded with a specific mix to take quickly, not the two to three years that Mr. Henigan. Uh led on. Um, and they're also brought up to a more stable standard with the erosion control mats. That are proven to work on two to one slopes as is stated in the Mass D P regulations. So we are not concerned with these slopes. We wouldn't have designed them if if we were concerned with them. There's certainly a lot of measures to be put in place by the contractor if they do feel they are not stable. Or they need to be reinforced. Um, they can certainly access these areas through the woods. Um, man, men can access them, or they can use equipment to go over this two to one slopes. Uh, there's many. Measures that can be put in place to fix these. Um, the thought that no one's ever maintained a two to one slope before. Is is just incorrect.
I I just want, just, just one quick, quick response and and uh. And again, I, and I think, you know, the the folks at Granite have done a good job. This is a complicated site. I just wanted a couple of things. With regard to, not that, I think that erosion controls have never been placed at the edge of disturbance or the toe of a slope. But it's similar on this site that, you know, there's, on any project, you're gonna have challenging, challenging. Spots and and things you're trying to find solutions to. And I'm sure that, yeah, it is common that you have erosion controls. Right at the bottom of a steep slope up against your edge of disturbance. Um, which is my thing on, and just as I said at the outset. Steep slopes aren't, aren't unique to construction either. Um, but I think on, on this site, it's, you know, the extent of the steep slopes. It's the extent of the area that that the erosion controls are immediately at the toe of the slope up against the edge of disturbance. And the same thing with with the blasting, you know, blasting isn't unique to to construct either. But it did deserve some consideration on this project because of the amount of it relative to the size of the site. So um, that's, that's all I wanted to say. You know, it's, it's obviously um, you know, a lot of, a lot of everything on this site. So it's worth, worth considering.
When you. I make, can I, can I make one more uh comment on this? Um, one thing that we haven't talked about at all in terms of the stormwater is the. Percentage of the site that's impervious. Uh, when you look at the road system, when you look at the uh, the roofs. The number of roofs for fifty units and so forth. I think one of the peer review came up with over six acres of impervious surface. And when you impose that and in that, that six acres would be roughly thirty eight percent of the total site. Uh, that's an extraordinary number, I think. Uh, and I'll ask Mr. Henigan, is that true for? Uh, a site that's supposed to be environmentally sensitive site design? Uh, typically, they'd be looking for something in a range of fifteen percent. Maybe twenty max for impervious surfaces for an area outside of the urban area. This could be in a rural location. So I'm just curious.
Is uh is ten and a half percent of the site.
Impervious?
Yeah, it's six acres over fifty six point eight acres. So it's actually ten percent, which is less than the fifteen percent.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the sixteen acres here that that is the buildable part of this site. This is the buildable part of this site.
Give a fifty six acre parcel. It's not fair to only include a portion that makes the numbers incorrect.
Okay, I I don't wanna get into that right now. So, okay.
Okay, any other questions? We have two questions from uh. The uh. Let's see. Jim Younger, will we see plans that include delineations of decks in relation to buildings given. One slopes and potential erosion? In my experience, this plan is untenable, and I expect you to see structural integrity issues associated with decks. And there are foundations as they appear to be in path of potential unstable. Once project is completed, the contract gone, how long will a contractor guarantee the work on be provided? Can't answer that question. Somebody wanna, Jill, or some, somebody from Granite?
Uh, actually, I just wanted to address the issues with regard to guarantees and security. I mean, under the NIPD's permit, we we are required to have monitoring. And we would, again, agree to have a professional monitor it. And we would also agree to have the SWIP peer reviewed. We're not trying to just force it off on the construction person. It's important to us that there be integrity in the site. And we have no problem having um a professional T C, somebody objective hired by the town to review our SWIP. As a matter of fact, we welcome that. Um, first, second, relative to the stabilization of the slopes, that's what you do during NIPDs. Is you ensure that it's stabilized and we have no problem even securing it. I think, you know, Ms. Crouch has good points. It, you, you wanna make sure that whatever you're going to do, right? There's money behind it. And I get that. The developer is going to be on site until those slopes are stabilized. So the developer is gonna be responsible. And despite the fact that you would have the ability to stop issuing building permits and use and occupancy permits. Um, we would have no problem bonding our work because we believe that the contractors we hire will do a good job. And that we can execute the plan as shown. Um, I, and I, I have to apologize. I can't remember the rest of the question, but I can have um.
No, I think, I I think you, well, there, this person is um saying that they think the uh, the decks. Are beyond unstable.
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's perfect. And I think you actually answered Younger's next question. Any special permit? Managed to include actual conditions and include financial bonds, and you indicated that would be the case.
And we could even potentially do something to address, you know, other concerns with regard to the um ongoing maintenance. So that we can actually put in place either perpetual fund, something really to address Ms. Crouch's earlier comment about how do we know you're gonna do this? Um, we know we're gonna do it and we can financially secure that because we're gonna have money set aside anyway. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions? So Deborah, have you got anything else you wanna present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First, the only thing I'd like to mention about the um slope comments that we were hearing is that one thing that you have to remember. Is that at the bottom of these slopes is the buffer zone. There's no space in between. So if there is an issue, they're going back to conservation. If they need to bring equipment in there or do anything in that buffer zone. So that's one of the big concerns. Secondly, um, Mr. David Lash would like to speak. He presented a letter to the board and he would like to um address his comments from that letter.
Yeah, and I wanna, as I said to um the person that sent that letter, um, that was a nine page letter. So um, I'm, I, I don't want him to um just go through that nine page letter. If he has specific and directly relevant comments that haven't already been addressed, that would be great. But I just wanna avoid repetition of something the board has already seen and is on the official record.
I'm certain that he can do that.
Good.
Hi, am I live?
You are.
Everyone, uh, it's late, but I guarantee I'm gonna talk about some things that haven't been discussed tonight. And I hope it will really help the searching questions that the board is pursuing on this really delicate issue. I'd like to share my screen.
You wanna identify yourself because you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Of course, of course. Uh, Dave Lash, seventy three Lakeshore Avenue, Hamilton. And representing the Tobacco Lake and Watershed Association, we've lived on, on the lake for thirty five years. And I've been on the board for thirty four years. So I I selected this photo at, at, for the beginning here because all the issues with water bodies and watersheds. Are below the surface. This is a beautiful aspirational picture of Tobacco Lake looking south. The one thirty three Essex Street is just off to the right a few uh ticks. Um, but this lake and watershed has been under tremendous pressure for thirty five years. So um, I'm gonna address downstream impacts. You can see the black circle where the proposed project is. And um, its relationship to the ponds and lakes, you already know that. Uh, you can see that five towns are directly in the thirty six hundred acres. But interestingly, with, you know, over two hundred years of human development, there are only three hundred homes, plus or minus. Within this boundary. And it's a darn good reason why, because the three communities pull their public water. From this aquifer system and these interconnecting water bodies. So my first experience with stormwater was as um Assistant City Planner in Salem, Mass. Many years ago, long before the um stormwater standards were established in Massachusetts. And for five years, I can tell you that there was not a week when there were not fights about. Uh, run, uh runoff and flooding from one property to another property. It was constant. It was litigious and the state enacted the stormwater. Um, standards to address that issue. So this is the project site. This is taken from the stormwater um management report. And you can see that it is a stone's throw from Beck's Pond. Beck's Pond is connected by a. Um, a wetland to directly into Tobacco Lake. They're exactly the same water elevation in the two. So water is flowing regularly and freely between those two water bodies, as is the case. Round pond is slightly higher. Gravelly pond depends on how much water Manchester pulls out of it.
So I I I wanna get to the stormwater comments.
Coming, sir. Thank you. This is, this is a, an important piece of stormwater. Because water is everything in this watershed. And while it is technically true that the project site is not part. Of any of the recharge protection areas or the water supply protection areas. This graph, this chart map shows you all these crosshatched areas. They're all sensitive areas. And the site sits atop a granite hill in the middle of all of this, where all the runoff today. And in the future is always flowing into these other areas. So our, our challenge um as a community, as a town, and as a lake association. Has been focused more at the north end of the site, at the outlet, where we have a serious problem of over vegetation. Um, uh, loss of the channel, lower flow. Which has raised the water level up about a foot on average. We have begun a important coalition effort. To clean this workout, but this is directly related to one thirty three Essex Street. Because any increase in flow, the, the water system is so sensitive to flooding. And to all the pollutants, siltation that flows into this um water system. So in two thousand, uh, sorry, in twenty twenty, we got a real shocker when a nail wife, uh, sorry, with it. When a algae bloom closed the lake for nineteen days. And water systems have been discussed here uh in your hearings for some time. Right next to gravelly pond, which is basically an open reservoir for Man- Manchester. Right next to it in round pond, there was a algae bloom. You could throw a stone between those two ponds. That's pretty scary stuff. That's the stakes that we're dealing with. And on the right, you see that EPA is calling attention to everyone. That algae blooms are threatening all of our water bodies because of climate change. This is probably the most serious challenge that we're gonna have. And I, when I say we, I mean really the town of Hamilton. So there's five things. I've mentioned the five key areas. I've mentioned the first one, incredibly fragile and important watershed. Um, that, but I'm gonna quickly run through and it's been covered tonight, but I think. Be able to bring a little different perspective on the issue of excessive runoff, flooding, siltation and pollutants.
Okay, could we, could you hold on for a second, Jill?
I, I just, I know, okay.
Is there anything you wanted to say?
Oh, yeah, and we, we still, I I greatly appreciate Mr. Lash's comments and I understand the, oh, the fragility of the watershed. But it, I've read his report. I had great concerns. I appreciate this and I agree. And there are about fifteen hundred homes in that area that's the watershed. And I understand that it's a fragile nature. But we, we really need to be on point because we have a traffic consultant that still needs to speak. We have your peer consultant here to review it, and we have a butters who wanna discuss it. And while I appreciate this. I think there's an opportunity, Mr. Lash, to speak with the Conservation Commission in this planning board. But this is, this particular description in project isn't relative to the stormwater that we just discussed for our project. It involves contaminants already existing from unfettered runoff.
I'm talking, I'm going to address pollutants from the development, from the.
I just, I just have to ask that this.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. I get it. So. This is actually, actually, uh, you're repeating the same presentation you've already made and it's on record. So I'd like you to direct your comments specifically to the project and the stormwater management plan that's under discussion.
Thank you. I'm doing that.
Well, no, you're actually not.
No, sir, sir.
I'm.
These points, points to Mr. Chair, these points, two, three, four and five. All directly relate to the proposed development. And that's what I'm, this slide is transitioning. Between the broader context of the watershed to the specific project. So if you'll bear with me for a couple of minutes. You'll see something you haven't seen before and that it directly relates to the stormwater design for this project.
Good. I'd like to see that.
Okay, here we go. So I, I've been through every page of the stormwater management report. I second what others have said. This has been a very detailed, hundreds of hours have gone into this design. It's been peer reviewed. But looking at it as a person concerned with downstream impacts, I had to ask, where's the water going? And so I had to look at the numbers, right? So we have sixteen acres of disturbed land, which equals fifty eight cubic feet. Or the volume of two point six houses. And I really.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you again.
I, come on.
No, you have had, no, no. You, this is the exact same information.
It is not.
Already, it is. This is exactly the information. I read this already.
You have not seen this.
Yes, I have.
No, you have not.
I, you, you presented this in your nine.
And you have not seen this. Nature moves water through the system, the pre-development scenario. Through trans- transpiration, which is gone and after the development and three other ways. And this goes directly to questions that planning board members have asked tonight. Here's the key. The stormwater standards in Massachusetts address surface flow, period. The last planning board meeting, you talked about bedrock and potential flow, and the fact that none of us know how water flows in the bedrock under this development. But there's a third way that water flows, and that's in the overburden. So if that's how nature does it in the pre-development scenario, how does it happen in the proposed development? So this is the entire storage volume in the current design, taken directly from the stormwater management plan. There's a total volume of forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine cubic feet of storage, which is the equivalent of one point eight houses. Now, I concede that in a storm, twenty-four hours of rain, you have certain number of turns, because every one of those storage systems is bringing in new water and other water is filtrating out of that system. But where is all the other water going? So the way the standards work is the the CAD system that generates all these calculations is looking at one thing and one thing only, the flow of water above the ground. As soon as it penetrates through that surface layer, it is lost. And there is no volumetric calculations anywhere in this system to where all the other water goes. And we do not have in the stormwater management report any analysis of where a two-year storm with eight point four houses worth of water is flowing when you have storage volume in the current design of one point eight. I am not saying that this is bad engineering. I'm saying that the, my hypothesis is that the situation here is fairly unique, or at least very unusual. Let me explain why and how. By the way, that's a hundred-year storm. The natural condition fails in a hundred-year storm, and so does the design, basically. All right, so here's the pre-development. What's actually happening? Sixteen acres of overburden is stripped away. That overburden is not, forget the surface. They've analyzed what happens with the surface here. But that overburden acts as a sponge. It's holding water right in place. The water is, the roots of the trees are holding it. The organic material is holding it. That water is slowing down the runoff from this site, if you care about downstream impacts. So here's what's gonna happen. All this beautiful overburden in the in the photo on the left is gonna be blasted away. And you're gonna create a solid tabletop. Now, whether that bedrock tabletop will take in some water and move some water, you can see, anybody knows. Someone said earlier, let's use some common sense. Not very much water is gonna flow off of that site very fast after a storm. And then once that tabletop is created, you're gonna get a very, very porous layer between the surface and the bedrock. Nobody's analyzed what, where the water is in there. And my guess is the calculations will show that the vast majority of the water is gonna hit that porous layer. Where's it gonna go? And if that water goes to the wetland faster than normal, faster than the pre-development, then what we're gonna have is that wetland float filling up, that culvert backing up, more excessive volume hitting Beck's Pond. And with all of that, what do we get? More phosphates, more pollutants, a lot more siltation. So the other, so where does the back end of this look like? Well, this is called real erosion. It can either happen from surface runoff, or in some cases, it actually emerges from below the ground. Because the water's gotta go somewhere. There's water behind it, creating positive pressure. And it's gonna flow out of the surface, maybe all the way down near the base of the slope, but before the wetland. And that's gonna start causing erosion. And some of that erosion may be in the buffer zone.
So I'm still.
Sir, I've got about one more minute. If you would bear with me, I will be done, and then you can take this any direction you wanna go. The other point here is that that is very different from the conditions that are normally dealt with in the Massachusetts stormwater standards, is we have an enormous potential energy here. This development is fifty feet above the wetlands. When that water begins to run, it's gonna cause a great deal of erosion. We all know the power that you have with that. Therefore, Massachusetts is looking really hard at new standards for the storm, for stormwater runoff. And I said that in my letter, so I won't repeat it here. But this is a map, fifty-five percent more serious, heavy, heavy precipitation events in the northeast. Just to give you one flavor, there's pages of data that Mast EP has put together on this, which is why new tougher standards are coming out. This schematic comes directly from the stormwater plan. There's been a lot of talk tonight about maintenance. As I said in my letter, and I will not repeat, there's a myriad failure points in any one of these maintenance areas. In Essex, there's a large parking lot. It's all sloped towards three catch basins that are about twenty feet from Alewife Brook. And all three of those catch basins are all filled up and essentially non-functioning. All that flow is going directly into Alewife Brook. The same conditions are likely to.
All right, I I.
And then my final point is, all this flow is gonna carry phosphates into the water system. So finally, the planning board is our only entity to look at this situation holistically. Conservation Commission and Board of Health are tightly bound by regulations. You have the latitude of a special permit to look at all the different factors. So I thank you for your patience, and I'll stop my share.
Okay. As I feared, that was pretty much repetitive of the letter that you had already sent. No, you go ahead, Bill.
Once again, we have contradictory.
Oh, no, I I get it.
Hold on, information here. The the gentleman from Granite Engineering says that the runoff, the surface runoff into the ponds is gonna be less with the development, because the various systems put in place will spread the water, and it will percolate. Fat more, larger share of the water will percolate. And now we have us, you know, Mr. Lash, saying that the overburden, which is only, you know, one or two feet thick, is large enough to hold houses and houses full of water, acting like a sponge. And if we get rid of that, then all that water is gonna turn into surface water and completely overburden the two lakes. Now.
Well, it's interesting.
This is much worse than two economists arguing. I'm sorry.
Right. Well, it's interesting that this has been brought up, and none of the engineers, ransom engineer, has has not brought this up at all. And my question is, Mr. Lash, are you a registered professional engineer?
No, I'm not, but I do have two engineering degrees. I have a master in civil engineering with a subspecialty in geotechnical engineering. And the key enlightening course I took was called Earth Structures. I then had twenty-five years of commercial real estate development. I've seen all these issues from every side. I think I'm qualified to to be an investigator on behalf of my town and my watershed to look at these situations. I'm not accusing anyone that's done the engineering calculations because they followed the proxy that's in the standards, which is to look at surface flow only. But that's not the issue facing all of us today because of the height of the site and the fact that it sits on bedrock.
So how do you propose to resolve this issue? Because what, by your own words, there are no standards, uh, objective standards for measuring or or regulations for controlling your your theoretical presentation.
Well, first of all, I don't know the hy- hydro CAD software, but my guess is that although it was not provided, it can add up, it can aggregate the volumes that are supposedly coming off the surface. And then you will know what your delta is. How much, how many house loads of water are not accounted for by the surface flow? And then at least we have a start at asking the question, where's that other water going to go?
Let's ask the people from Granite Engineering. That's a reasonable question. Can you answer that? Where where's all the water going? Now, breathe.
I don't know. Have Granite Engineering still with us? Yes, we do.
Yeah. So, thank you. And and we also read Mr. Lash's letter. He's clearly very passionate about the topic. However, when when providing technical letters like this, there there is a reason why they go through a peer review process. Because this letter is is riddled with inaccuracies specific to the stormwater. Mr. Lash refers to a a volume amount of only forty-one thousand cubic feet. However, he's looking at the volume amount of water in a small storm event that is actually in the pond, not the amount of volume that the ponds can withstand. That volume is actually four times or three times the amount of volume that Mr. Lash refers to. These type of things were were trickled throughout the report, you know, inaccuracies in him being able to read the hydro CAD, which is then expressed to you guys like there's a major issue, or there's a major concern. But my my stormwater report or Granite Stormwater Report has been reviewed by T E C. It does meet the policy. It was designed by professional engineers in Massachusetts. We are decreasing the flows, which Mr. Lash should be excited about, because that seems like it's a major topic of concern of his. But there's a protocol in place to make sure the information provided to you guys is as accurate as possible. And we've taken those those steps. The stormwater report that is in front of you from Granite Engineering is accurate. And and the stuff presented by Mr. Lash is just, is just false.
Yeah, and 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 I'm gonna speak to Ms. Eliason about this. You, when Jill sent her response to this letter, you objected that and were very vehemently opposed to having any discussion about the contents of her response to Mr. Lash's letter. Yet you have Mr. Lash presenting on and the information that was in that letter. So you really went against your own concern about providing information. You forced the applicant into a position where they have to respond, and that was the response that you did not want discussed tonight.
If you don't mind my.
I'm talking, I'm not talking to you. I'm talking to Deborah Eliason.
Yes, Mister Chairman, to answer your question, my concern with the fact that we received a volume of information from the applicant today at two o'clock approximately this afternoon. My only concern was that it not be discussed tonight, because we didn't have a chance to review it or look at it. Mr. Lash's letter was sent quite some time ago, so they had an opportunity to review it. It was submitted to the board in time for it to be presented to the board tonight, and that's what he did. So my intention was not to prevent the applicant from ever providing that information to you. That information certainly can be provided, along with her list of her evidence that has been provided to you, not listing any of the evidence that the public or our experts have provided to you. Also, her renderings, which were also not part of the topic tonight. So that was my only reason for objecting, was the timing of it. Not that the information should not be provided to you. I think that's perfectly fine. But the timing of it was the issue.
Right.
Tobacco Lake and Watershed Association is an independent organization. I filed my letter independently. I was forwarded your email about not repeating, and I think most members, I hope, would agree that I did not. I followed key highlights that I thought would inform the board's deliberations. So I I I think it's unfair to blame Ms. Ellison about my presentation tonight. And I also think it's unfair to not allow for highlights of hypotheses that are not proven. I never said that. I I'm raising concerns about why the calculations address such a small amount of the overall water. And I still believe that that data has not been put together and is incredibly important, which is why the whole premise of my letter was to ask the board, to ask tough questions, and to stress test the design. Not change the design, first stress test the design and get to the bottom of this.
Thank you. I think you're, you made your your own point is that this, all of these are hypotheses that are, don't seem to have any basis. In fact, these are your concern presented as if in fact they were facts.
I did not do that. I I.
Just said it was your hypothesis.
Exactly, a hypothesis. I am sharing with the board my hypothesis about where, how water flows on this site or will flow on this site, and asking the board to look at those issues and not frankly, some of the more minor questions that that we've spent a lot of time on tonight. Look, it's late. I'm not gonna say anymore. I appreciate the board's time and attention. And I hope that we'll be able to continue to look at data and get to the science. That was my goal, to get to the science.
Right. Um, so this now, unfortunately, we don't have the time for the applicant to respond to your letter, which she's already provided to the board. And we said that we, out of deference to the rest of the board in discussion tonight, we would not get into, which I think is kind of unfair to the applicant. We're going to have to reschedule and have this conversation yet again. So we are now at ten fifteen. So do we want to continue with this, with the traffic?
I would hope so, because we've had our traffic engineer here, and and he's prepared, and it's it's, this is not, this is not a high burden site. It's a senior housing development that generates very little traffic. So I would greatly appreciate it if the board would allow that. Plus, we have had Ms. Altman here, and I'm sure she would prefer to be able to attend one meeting versus successive meetings. Mister Mitchell?
Okay, what is the board up for this?
How long do you think it was gonna take, please?
It shouldn't be longer, like four, four presentation slides from Mr. Thornton. And I believe that Ms. Altman has already reviewed the full plan, asked for comments. We responded completely, so I think it's a fast one.
Go ahead.
Want to mention that this should also include time for the opposition and the public to discuss this too. So that should be taken into consideration.
That's up to the board, but I would just appreciate if we could do that, too.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Scott Thornton with Vanessa Associates prepared the traffic assessment for the project. If I could share my screen, I have about, it's actually five slides to go through. But as Attorney Man mentioned, they should go pretty quick. Just wanna make sure you can all see that. Yes, the study area, great. So our traffic study was prepared, consistent with state and local guidelines or industry guidelines. We looked at a couple intersections on Essex Streets, did counts in in April of the of last year. Looked at operations, including crash data, site distances, vehicle speeds. We counted the intersections during the critical time periods, which are the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours. Found that the morning peak hour is generally between seven forty-five and eight forty-five, and the evening peak hours between four forty-five and five forty-five. We made adjustments for the effects of the COVID pandemic, consistent with Mast D O T guidelines for for adjustment, and also made some adjustments for seasonal considerations. We also looked at speeds on Tobacco Road in the vicinity of the site driveway. Did that on two occasions, generally found. Did that on two occasions, generally found that the speeds on an average basis are around twenty-six to twenty-seven miles per hour. And the eighty-fifth percentile speeds hover around thirty, twenty-eight to thirty miles per hour. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed is the speed that is generally where speed limits are, are set to. But on Chabaco Road, it's, it's, it's generally thirty miles per hour in the south or the eastbound direction. It's twenty-five miles per hour in the north or westbound direction. And the speed data is relevant because that has a factor on the site distance measurements. And we're looking to provide safe site distance so that vehicles can, both vehicles approaching the driveway can see vehicles exiting the driveway. And also motorists that are exiting driveway can see other vehicles approaching on Chabaco Road. So in the speeds dictate the site distances. So we've got for stopping site distance, which is the minimum value and required value for site distance. We, we have a requirement for two hundred feet based on thirty miles per hour, which again, we're using for the eighty-fifth percentile. And we can provide up to two hundred feet of site distance for the, along the roadway for, for stopping site distance. In terms of intersection site distance, which are the site distances for vehicles looking out from the driveway. Again, for a thirty mile per hour speed, we can provide three, or the requirements for three hundred thirty-five miles per, sorry, three hundred thirty-five feet. And the, we can provide a site plan or a site triangle that has clear site distances for that three hundred thirty-five feet. So we have the, we have the ability to maintain that clear site triangle and maintain all vegetation below twenty-four inch height to be able to maintain those clear site distances. In terms of traffic forecasts and vehicle trip generation, as Attorney Man mentioned, this is elderly housing. It's not a high or intense traffic generator. We base the estimates using the IT Trip Generation Manual. It's a standard industry source and required for use by the state and most reviewing agencies. Based on the fifty units, the, we have a weekday time period, twenty-four hours, one-way trips, looking at about a little slightly over three hundred trips over the course of an average day. In terms of the, again, the critical time periods, which are the weekday morning and the weekday evening time period, we're looking at about twenty-four trips total in the morning and about twenty-eight trips total in the evening. And that includes entering and exiting traffic, going in and out of the site. And that's not to say that there isn't traffic that doesn't get generated during the rest of the day. It's just that during these peak hours, which are, again, these are the peak commuter hours that where the traffic flow is, is highest on the adjacent roadways. These are the traffic volumes that we would expect the development to generate. And again, not a lot of traffic, not a lot of intensity to the vehicle trips. Equivalent to one vehicle trip every two, two and a half minutes during the peak hours and likely less throughout the course of the day. In terms of putting it in, in scale for comparison, in relative to the traffic flow on Essex Street, this would be Essex Street just west of the Chabaco Road intersection. Under the future no build condition, within during the morning time period, there'd be about four, five hundred eighty-six vehicles total both directions on Essex Street. And the project would be adding fourteen trips to that, to that traffic flow. During the evening peak hour, be looking at about six hundred eighty-seven vehicles on that same section of Essex Street. And the project would be adding about seventeen trips. So, you know, about two, two and a half percent, not a large increase in terms of the, the overall traffic flow. And just as a summary, you know, we did the, so we, so we take the existing traffic data, adjust it for a baseline condition, do a seven-year projection to get to a no build condition and then add the project traffic to that and do a comparison of the impacts between that no build condition and the noble condition plus the project, which is what we call the build condition. So we do that and then we measure the delays added by the project or when we add the project traffic into the intersection movements. In general, minimum of, of delay added at these locations, one and a half seconds or less at the study area locations. We expect that we will, we will maintain clear lines of sight to and from the driveway on Chabaco Road. Again, because we control that, that frontage and we're able to, to maintain that clear site distance. We had, we had recommended the installation of some warning signs at the intersection of Woodbury Street and Essex Street, both to, for, for advanced notice that there are stop signs ahead and intersection ahead signs. So this, the intent is just to, you know, reinforce the nature that, that motorists are coming up to an intersection. And, you know, for, that's, that's for the Essex Street traffic flow and for Woodbury Streets to reinforce the fact that they're coming up to, to a stop sign. So, so those, you know, we, we, we expect that will, that will improve visibility and direction at the intersection for, for motors, not just for the, for the project residents, but in general, resident, traffic flow on, on Essex Street. Couple other points, the, you know, projects providing meets all the requirements, exceeds requirements for, for parking. And there's an additional twenty-two spaces that are being provided for visitors, which again exceeds, exceeds the local requirement. So our traffic study, just little housekeeping, probably in reverse order. But we, our study was submitted, it was dated in June of twenty twenty-one. We received some comments from the town's peer consultant, TEC, that were dated August thirtieth. We provided responses to those comments on October fifteenth. And, you know, I think in general, you know, TEC is, is very competent and does a very thorough review. And I think, you know, in general, there were, there were a number of comments that, that, that didn't really require response with, that we were, you know, they acknowledged what, what we had done in the course of the study. They, they had also recommended that we, and I don't want to put words in Liz's, in Liz's presentation because I know that, that you're going to listen to her as well. But I think, you know, in, in general, I think we've satisfied the concerns that they raised. And, and again, as, as Attorney Man mentioned, you know, not a, not a large traffic generator by any means. So that's, that's it for traffic. Tried to keep it quick. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
I believe in TEC's comments, I think they mentioned there was discussion about the, the slope of the sidewalks within the, within the property. Is that true?
Yes, we had made a comment regarding the slope of the sidewalks. And while we understand that sidewalks can match the road slope, we just wanted to acknowledge the type of development this was and that if any less steep sidewalk slopes could be provided if there was that opportunity to just take that under consideration.
Yeah, so, so as a board member, I feel very concerned about the, the mobility, safety within the, within the property. And those sidewalks were, were a concern and there were a number of places where that occurred. So I just wondered if you had any recommendations specifically for how to remediate that?
The applicant's engineer would have to take a look and see if there was any place where they could make switchbacks or additional areas that they could provide less steep slopes. But I believe that that, that they've tried to meet the ADA requirements such that they, again, they are allowed to match the roadway slope. But that was our concern too, was the, the nature of this type of development. So Granite would have to, you know, speak to that if there was any opportunity to provide any less steep slopes in some of the steeper areas.
Thank you.
And, and a question. This looked at traffic, regular traffic flows. You didn't get into traffic that would be generated during construction?
No.
Okay, good. I do have a question.
I had a quick question.
Go ahead.
The, the part of Chabaco Road from Essex Street into where the project will enter seems to me to be old and decrepit, whereas later parts of, further down parts of Chabaco Road are quite well improved. Would you think that the part of Chabaco Road up to the project is up to the project or should it be, you know, improved?
I believe the town is milling and overlaying and improving Chabaco Road separately than this project. And when that occurs, then all that potholing and cracking right around where the site driveway is going to be, that will be improved. And I'm sure that there's some improvement proposed by the applicant right at that site driveway as well, once they
They'll probably wait until the eight hundred truckloads of stone have been carried out.
That's like
Do it after, after rather than before.
Right.
That's one thing that I, I would be interested in, in hearing. I, I thought, I heard the number of four hundred truckloads. But I, I, this is sort of related to the blasting and, and the traffic is, and I know what the concern to the neighbors is. How many truckloads are estimated to occur over the entire project?
Attorney Man has that number. She didn't
I think we said four hundred, but I might be wrong.
Was it eight hundred?
So I, we, we would count what we did on, for the septic system, which I believe, Brenton, Jeff, there was like four hundred for that, right? And then we have the number to be able to haul out the material and I, I, I think it's closer. I have to take a peek. You know what? I didn't have that in my back pocket because we had discussed it with the, with the blasting. One second. Sorry about this.
Now, what I, what I was getting at, it would be just for my purpose of interesting, whatever number that is spread over the number of days of blasting. So you get it sort of daily average of whether it's five or ten truck, twenty truckloads a day.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are not, I mean, there's, there's a lot of trucks. I mean, I, my guess is it'll be somewhere around, when we did the projections, Mr. Mitchell, it was somewhere around forty-six truckloads a day. I mean, there's a lot of material to be taken off. It's ninety-eight thousand cubic yards. And each truck, you know, handles somewhere around thirteen hundred cubic yards. So we have a lot of trucks and we were figuring it on, you know, having a certain number of truckloads coming in and out, maybe about forty to forty-eight a day to, to remove from the site. But relative to that, it doesn't occur evenly. I mean, we can stretch it out. We can use product on site sometimes and it, it won't be a constant stream. It'll be, you'll have a certain number and then it'll go down and that's going to be the way it's going to actually happen. But, you know, during the construction phase, yeah, you're going to have to anticipate somewhere between forty and fifty trucks a day during the, during that part of the construction.
I think there was an eighty days blast, so it's three thousand something.
Yeah, it is, Mr. Norton. It's, it's, it could be that many, yes. You know, it's, it's hard to predict when that's going to happen.
I was curious in the, after hearing about the number of truckloads. But if we had, say, a snow event like we did a couple of days ago.
Sure.
I ran through some calculations here. So the road's about twenty-two hundred feet, Road A. Road B, seven hundred linear feet, total twenty-nine hundred linear feet. Driveway curb cuts, you've got fifty dwelling units roughly twenty-two feet wide. So you got eleven hundred linear feet, which is about thirty-eight percent of your road length is actually driveways. That poses a problem in snow removal. You have to pull the snow out of the driveway first into the street. And then there's no place to put the snow because you can't dump it over the edge. And there is no snow shelf on the side of the road. So that you, so I looked at the total paved area, Road A, forty-eight thousand square feet. B, fourteen thousand square feet in the driveways. So you've got a hundred thousand square feet of surface area with twelve inches of snow on that. That incidentally is about two football fields of forty-eight thousand feet each. So with a twelve-inch snowfall, total volume, thirty-seven hundred and thirty-seven cubic yards. Weight of the snow is, is two million.
Hey, where is this? I don't want to understand. Is this a question? Because you're losing me.
No, I'm coming to the end. A dump, a dump, dump. So if you had a dump truck capacity of sixteen cubic yards, it would be two hundred and thirty-four trucks to unload that one snowfall. And if you had smaller dump trucks, because they typically, smaller trucks are limited to a thousand pounds, you're over two thousand trucks. I'm just saying, you're talking about, you know, multiple days to get rid of all the snow on the site. So I'm just, it's just, it's just amazing.
It's possible, but I mean, the way snow is plowed is not like that. You don't plow the entire surface and remove every inch. I mean, everybody knows how you plow snow. You push it to the sides. And yeah, then you have a limited breadth. And then as days go on, the site, the contractor comes back. It's no different than what you do throughout the town. So, yeah, is there limited snow storage? There's still snow storage on the site. There are available spots. But if they have to remove it from the site, they remove from the site. It's a private contractor. Again, it's no different than what you do throughout your town.
If you have thirty percent of your road is driveway, you can't plow it into a driveway.
No, but you wouldn't plow it into a driveway, but you can see all the relief areas on the side. And again, it's no different than when you have smaller homes, which you have in these neighborhoods that have, you know, hundred feet, not even a hundred feet of frontage on them. Again, it's, it's no storage. We're going to haul it off when we have to, but you don't haul the entire breadth of the way. That's just not how it works.
Well, just the sense of the scale of the project.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, 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 it's a decent sized project. We, we, we aren't contesting that. It's a sixty-six acre parcel. I agree.
Other questions? Okay. Let's see, are there any, I want to do the public questions first. So Deborah, you can hold on one second. Mr. Jim Younger, Mr. Mitchell, this only happens if the board requires this as part of any special conditions, not if promised by the applicant. Not sure what that question refers to.
Oh, this was about us posting a bond, Mr. Mitchell, to secure the slopes to make sure they stabilized.
Okay. Well, a geo hydrology study be performed. Want a study like this help to resolve these issues? I think we've already had this discussion on last time. And I'm actually want to reserve this for a future meeting because we've already gone into areas we'd hoped to avoid. And the board has got a series of questions they're going to be submitting. And I'm sure the Save Chabaco Woods has further questions as well as the public. Oh, we're going to hold on. Uh Chris Davis, what about the impact of truck traffic during construction? Yeah, well, I think we just answered that, Chris, how many trucks per day? How long to remove all the trees and rocks, bring in topsoil, road construction materials, and what will the air quality and noise impact be of these trucks? How will all these? Back that back road, how will it affect neighborhood, what route will they take through Hamilton or Manchester? Construction and traffic impacts are greater concern than those eventual residents, I would agree. Um so. I think we just talked about that, we didn't talk about the route they'll be taking, because I don't think we know that. Um. Anybody else has any comments? Okay, I'll move on.
I just had a quick question, how many cubic yards of um material have to be removed from the site? Did you say ninety eight thousand?
Yep.
Cubic yards? I think at the last meeting you said that each truck could handle twenty eight cubic. Yards of of material, so that.
No, I I think it's that was tons, I mean, it it is, one second, I have to go back because I'm not great at this. Each truck handles thirteen hundred cubic yards, wait, days to export now. Oh, wait, you're right, Miss Crouch, I apologize, that's the amount, twenty eight cubic yards per truck, oh, it's thousands of trucks, I mean, I'm not telling you.
Thirty, it's thirty five hundred.
Oh, my God, Miss, I bet you it's more. And and that's why we we say, look, it's gonna have to be slowly done and we're gonna have to use the trucks in a manner so that we lessen the impact to the development. You are so right.
I just wanted, can I make a just a quick, quick comment on that, I know um that information was presented at the last meeting on the twenty eight cubic yards per truck. And there's been some discussion here about um. The routes that uh the routes that trucks will take and the condition of the road and that sort of thing. And if I think it'd be good to to get a better handle on that, to under- understand the trucks per day, but I just wanted to throw out too that that analysis consider potentially that. Even a tw- given this material, the the density of the granite, that even a twenty eight cubic yard truck may not be able to carry twenty eight cubic yards of granite and meet. The ratings for the road, um you know, to meet state regulations, so I think it's just to make sure that's considered, uh you know, that's considered in the calculation.
It's it, that's an awesome question, because you know what, we were concerned too, we did check it out and it is rated, it does meet the requirement, so it's fine. We did check it because we wanted to make sure before we presented that it was going to be accurate and we didn't have to use smaller trucks. So the answer to your question is the road is rated and can handle that weight with granite, we asked the question.
Okay, um this is anonymous, is the traffic study by done by an independent contractor chosen by the town? Fifty five housing, correct? Um I know many fifty five bus drive around town at quite a frequent pace, the Essex Woodbury intersection is going to be a nightmare, how do we assist traffic flow? How many days, months? Was on was onsite estimating done? Um. I can answer, the traffic study was done by a consultant hired by the applicant, it was peer reviewed by T E C. Um. How do we, the I think it's gonna Vanessa's gonna have to answer, um how many days, months was onsite estimate done?
So yeah, so uh the the typical process is uh to do counts on on a typical day and assume that that's a snapshot in time and it's representative. It's a it's a representative sample um of the traffic flow.
Okay. Uh Jim Younger, do these traffic numbers relate to construction traffic too, not just completed project, I think we've talked about that. Kenneth Whitaker, how have traffic engineers evaluated whether tobacco road? Um the traffic engineers evaluated whether tobacco load. The doesn't, it stops theirs, oh, I don't know. Robert uh Casey, and that's just wonderful, I think that's a comment. Jim Younger, okay, then with the special conditions, prevent snow from being plowed over the two. One, two to one slopes, are there relief areas? I think we talked about that. Mike Acini, I hope I said that right. How can a traffic study for this proposed development be relevant, given the towns post and the page about a wrong to create a popular cut through from one to eight? The traffic study needs to look at all traffic volume from existing points of entry and model shift to a road. Um. I can't answer that, uh I think that's something that um neighbors have been talking to the town about. There's really concern about that and how are they gonna mitigate that traffic, but that, don't leave. That was part of this traffic study or T E C, I don't think that was part of it. I'll take um then silence as a yes, um. And it looks like our key, our key, I can't read mine yet. Eyes are shot, our case are sorry, car, yeah, Anna Carce.
I just promoted him.
Um. I. Something I about the property in my house is on the street with one tree in front, no tree line, I'm deeply concerned about traffic of forty to fifty trucks. Pack blasted rock and gravel and dust passing my house every day for ninety days, I'm deeply concerned about the book of dust produced. Lasting the granite, which can stay in the air for days and very dangerous to breathe, that will be passing my house every day is the air my son breathes. It's the air I breathe. Our lungs are damaged from this, may not, we may not know for a long time, be responsible. Is Larry Smith's development more than my son's health?
I will note that the the SWIP actually does address dust control and and methodology for removing and driving the truck vehicles. So now we'll, it does get handled and to the extent necessary, the trucks have covers on them, you ever see that? It in they spray stuff down to ensure that there's no dust, so all of that is addressed. And and the board can condition it on again, having a peer reviewer of the SWIP that does detail this.
Jim Younger, will the next be meeting be in person? No, I doubt it. Um not until a board of health lists the the uh. Um requirement for masks, because in previous comments, uh people were um. Upset that they couldn't see who was talking when we were in person, they couldn't hear us behind the masks, uh so. We switched to the all remote to be um order so people could hear and see us. Anonymous, Woodbury has fernal pools and a super narrow road, please do not tell me thousands of go down there a day. Uh now, there won't be thousands of trucks going down there a day. And Whitaker, have you determined whether the twenty eight cubic yard trucks can pass? Over the road without collapsing the culvert, allowing the wetland drainage, where are your calculate? I can't answer that. Uh.
That was that question about the the supporting.
Have you determined whether the twenty eight cubic yard trucks can pass over the road without collapsing the culvert? Allowing a wetland drainage, where are your calculations?
Um Mister Mitchell, I uh asked DPW, I asked police and fire if there were any restrictions on tobacco road. Regarding uh weight limitations of of trucks, uh there are none. Uh we've also checked with the state to determine if they had any, they had none.
Okay, I think that answers the question, so that's all the public questions, um. Deborah?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, um once again, we do represent the public. Um it's a very important issue, this construction traffic, truck traffic. And it's not something that should be just given cursory review and responses with all due respect by um Attorney Man. This really should be looked at by a traffic engineer or construction engineer, we've been asking for a construction management plan for a long time and we haven't had one. And this is one of the areas where it's very, very important. We need to know how many truck trips will it take? How many truck? Trucks will there be per day, what route will they take through town? Will they line up on tobacco road waiting to get loaded and how many will be in that line? Is tobacco road um wide enough to accommodate the queue? What times a day will that be, what effect will that have on traffic on tobacco road and the other roads on the route traffic? These are very, very important issues and all we've been given are very cursory answers. You're required to determine that this is not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. You're required to determine that the adverse impacts of this development don't outweigh the benefits. And in specifically looking at that question, you have to look at traffic flow and safety and you just don't have enough information. So I asked you, ask you, and we've asked you before to require the applicant to do a specific study with regard to the truck traffic. And also with regard to construction management, which I understand is not under review tonight. But as part of this entire issue that really needs to be addressed by the board. This is one of the largest developments in Hamilton in its recent history. It's twice the size of Canterbury Brook, it's four times the size of Patton Ridge. It's something that has to be taken seriously and it's going to have a very strong impact on the immediate neighborhood, but also. Um all of the neighbors along the truck route that will be taken, so thank you very much.
We we have no issue delivering that, it's typically not done at this point because we don't have an approval, we can't give you definitives. And typically, the board conditions us and provides us with construction routes um at in the process, but we can propose. Uh you know, a a plan to do so, but I can assure you, it's going to be about fifty to fifty five trucks a day. Delivering materials and taking materials off and it's not a substantial increase. Um to the general traffic in the area, but we will do so in a responsible manner and, you know, limit the times and we will never queue. On a public street, it will be done inside the um, it will be inside the property.
Then what we'd want to see from an engineer with all due respect, that that's possible, that.
I mean, again, it's not, it's always possible, you have to be able to get equipment in and out and an engineer will provide, I guess, the plan, but. Uh with all due respect, this is something that's usually done at the very end, when the board is at that process point. Because it's a temporary condition and again, I hate to keep saying it because people are asking what a SWIP is. That plan really is an exceptionally important part of a project that the at at when it is approved by a board. Because that's when this board has so much control over how construction works on a site. And we're going to comply and we're going to make it as um, you know, in. Is I guess easy to absorb into the communities, absolutely possible, but it's also a very temporary condition, it is.
And that's exactly what we need to know is whether it is temporary or not.
Again, I said we would, but it's.
It's fair. Yeah, one of the things that I'm going to be proposing or slash recommending to the board as part of the decision. Is that we require a construction management plan. That plan would be prepared by the contractor uh in consultation with an engineer, but. Uh also importantly, Hamilton Police Chief. Uh and staff as well as the Fire Department and DPW Director. Um that construction management plan addresses traffic routing, uh it addresses uh. Uh dust control, it addresses keeping the street clean with wash down areas on the site. So it's an important element that uh our typical project in Hamilton doesn't require. But this magnitude of project certainly does and it will be part of this board's uh decision requirements.
And with all due respect, Mister Chairman, that's information that you need to have before you make your decision. Because that's part of the information or part of the findings that you need to make. And so I would respectfully suggest that that needs to be done prior to and not as a condition of the project.
Can't have a construction management plan without the construction company, but we definitely can give you conditions that we're willing to observe with a hundred percent, not a problem.
Okay, good. Uh further questions from the board? Okay, we have one last question from the public, again anonymous, uh ten D, the developer keeps referring to SWP P P. Can the developer please confirm the SWP P P is and not a guarantee to prevent storm water?
Oh, that's another question.
Uh Jill, you want to?
I it does, it's not even a question, I mean, we know it's a plan, but it's a plan put in place to prevent storm water pollution, I don't know how to answer it. I apologize, I'm not being.
No, 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 I I get it, I get it, I get it. All right, um.
If somebody has their hand raised too, I don't know if that's true or not, Mister Mitchell.
Uh let's see, that's I guess, oh, no, it's. And Sarkisian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Ani Sarkisian, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh I'm not satisfied with Jill's answer about the dust, um for example, so my house is right on the road. Very close to the road and it is not one of the houses that is way back from the street, protected by a tree line. Um I have seen garbage trucks, which um we have all. Made the decision um that they are safe, um I have seen them break down directly outside of my house and just leak fluid into the streams. Right outside, and so Jill telling me that there's going to be a cover over the top of the truck and it's gonna be fine is not enough for me. My son. His health. Is way more important. Than these people getting to make a lot of money. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. I think that's it, board, I think the board is uh. Looks like they're um ready to retire for the evening, um. I'm sure uh. I think that's it, so I think what we uh unless anybody has any other comments, then we will um. Can we will vote to continue um this hearing for um Patrick, when's our next meeting?
Uh very quickly, let me say that uh the project did attain their conservation commission wetlands permit last week. Uh so uh that has been attained by the project. Uh our planning board schedule has uh next Tuesday night as our next meeting, that's February the fifteenth. Uh we set that up because the uh twenty second is the day after the holiday. And the Board of Selectmen were meeting that night and we didn't want to conflict with them.
We're not available on the fifteenth?
So, okay, so then I guess we're gonna have to move it.
To uh March the first would be the the next meeting.
Okay. I just need to confirm, Mister Mitchell, that um the um. Our peer review because of the board, well, I guess, let me back up, does the board want us to submit responses to your questions for hydrology in writing? Or would you like to engage in that round table discussion so that I'll have Rick Frappa and James here? Wh- which would the board prefer?
Well, I I'll speak for myself, other board members can certainly chime in and and indicate where they'd like to go. I think it would be useful to have a round table discussion, I think, um you know, Bill has certainly posed this, we keep hearing different stories from different people. I think it would be great to have um. Um uh and I'm a discussion on the hydrology, the geohydrology, the blasting, if we need it. And the stormwater management, because they're all interrelated, so I think it would be great if we could have um the um. The not only your consultants, but our peer review team. All all on this call, so we can go through the questions that the board has and and answers um. And uh get the answers that we need.
So Mister Scott, would it be okay if we then followed up on the March one, because I have to go back and check if everybody's available? But I I.
That would be good, if you could, if that can happen, go ahead, Marnie.
Oh, yes, I was going to agree with your point, I I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think a round table discussion is good. But in conjunction with that, I would add that um. The copies of the PowerPoints that were presented today and the various charts and whatnot being made available to us, um I'd like to have it for my. Records and uh certainly go over them again, I know various individuals, uh not just the applicant, produce some um. Uh charts and whatnot, and I and I would, I'd very much like to have copies of them.
Absolutely.
If yeah, so I may interject with that, I'd like a copy.
If, yeah, so I may interject with that. I'd like a copy of that too, please, because I haven't been able to uh, get my computer to work properly. Thank you.
Okay, so that would be great because um, otherwise, uh, if we did not, if we were not doing this roundtable, how, what other topics um, would you be prepared to present? Add a question to you, Jill.
Sure. So I mean, I think what would be really great if we can um, begin to go over the board's findings. Because when we look at the board's findings, we can actually, I mean, I, I apologize, but I can only submit my information because I know it's verified. I'm not going to ever submit somebody else's. So that's why I'll do it like that. Maybe we could go through the findings and refer out to each of the individual um, pieces of credible information that have been reviewed to support it. In that way, we can go through the whole site. Or um, we could go through the plan and actually look at the individual units. I don't know how, I have no idea how the board really wants to handle this. It's not a typical review process that we're going through at all. I mean, we're on our fourteenth meeting and that's very unusual. So I, 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 that's why I would love to be able to focus on the findings and use that as a um, platform. Because at this point, it, we do need to kind of move the ball ahead. And, and I think that the board has that rubric and it'd be easier to go through that. So I'm hoping we can resolve hydrology at the next meeting with the storm and then be able to do that process. So I really would like to hit that first.
I actually think that's way too ambitious. I, I mean, I, I personally, it's eleven o'clock at night and I don't need, uh, you know. I, I think.
I don't mean right now.
No, not now. I'm talking about at the next meeting, but I anticipate that if we have a roundtable discussion, it will last a considerable amount of time. And Patrick, well, no, the next meeting, we do have another storm water management plan. But I would prefer to, you know, absorb the information that we get at the next meeting and then address the findings as just the topic of one meeting.
That's what I said. I, I said to do the hydrology next and then the next meeting, I said we could.
The next meeting. I, I apologize to you that, I apologize. I misunderstood because I was thinking, oh, my God. Not another eleven o'clock.
Oh, no, Miss Coach, I, when ten o'clock happens, I become a pumpkin myself. So I hear you.
All right. So, so, so if we can make it happen with your consultant team and our peer reviewers, uh, Patrick. Um, then March first, we should have a roundtable discussion to really dig into and answer all the questions of the board and answer the questions posed by various members of the public as well as Save Chewbacca Woods representatives. That make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will we be able to get? Will we be able to get uh, materials that we can review before that, please?
Well, uh, any materials that are available will be sent to the board as they always have been.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I'm going to suggest we skip the minutes unless there's a legal reason we have to do the minutes. Because quite frankly, uh, it's eleven o'clock and um, I have to get up for an eight o'clock H T C meeting and like.
We just have to continue, vote to continue this.
Oh, yes, right. That's where I started before.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I'd like to.
Make a motion that we continue this meeting to.
March first, right, Patrick?
March first.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, well, roll call, vote. Um, Marnie?
Aye.
Amal?
Marnie Crouch, aye.
You're muted, Amal.
Amal Dalquist, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Bora, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Cory?
Cory Bowe, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Patrick, I'd ask you, but you, you know, um, uh, and let's see, did we get everybody except me? Uh, I, Rick Mitchell, I. So the meeting is continued. All right. So unless people um, want to talk about minutes, um, we can pass on that or we can just go through that quickly. Marnie, do you have any comments on those?
On the minutes? Um, well, I, I want to apologize in advance to our new minute person. Uh, but I found the minutes to be uh, too spartan to be worthwhile. Uh, they really didn't reflect um, the contents of the last meeting in any meaningful way. And uh, I, I did, I did uh, prepare a different set of minutes, but it's not something I would be willing to do on a, a, a full-time basis. It's way too time consuming and I'm not paid to do it. Uh, but I have a, a, a revised set of minutes that I think um, more uh, clearly and adequately sets forth the topics of discussion. Um, I know there's probably some happy medium, but when we have issues of this importance, I think it's, it's helpful for the board to have a set of minutes that they can refer to without having to go and listen or watch a YouTube video that lasts over three hours. So um, with that said, I can um, uh, send my version of the minutes to Patrick and he can distribute them and we can discuss them at the next meeting. I, I don't think we have to address the minutes right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. Uh, Rick, Mr. Chair, I would uh, like to suggest that we get both sets of minutes. Uh, so that we can discuss whether we think one is too limited or one is too detailed or whatever, maybe we have a heavy medium, whatever we need to do.
Okay.
We can get a.
All right, very well. Very good. Um.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. This is the marathon meeting. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. Let's start with uh, Ori Baloo.
Ori Bowe, aye.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Jonathan Bora.
Jonathan Bora, aye.
Uh, Amal?
Amal Dalquist, aye.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Rick Mitchell, I. It's unanimous. We are adjourned to you next month.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.